And welcome to the March first meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board. Just want to confirm, we have a script for a read here. I'm the Select Chair, Select Board Chair, Tom Acosta. I'll be confirming that all members and persons participating on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Strange is still muted. Several people are still muted. Uh, Lamar Golds?
Yes, here.
Okay, Richard Foster? I'll be confirming that all members and persons may be muted. Oh, Mark Strange? Steve Morantz? Okay, and Richard Foster? He's here. He may be muted, Lynn. Let's say he's muted.
Hold on, I've got to go find his phone number. He, he called in. Give me one second. Okay, there we go.
Richard Foster, are you here? With us?
Uh, he has to press. Okay, there he is.
Okay, there I am. Thank you.
Okay, good. And staff, I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Hope for Sturzick?
Okay, there, there he is.
And here we go.
All right, and Deb House?
Here I am.
Okay, Deb, great. And then, uh, you know, on the agenda, we have a Speaker, Fire Chief John Dearborn.
Uh, Chief Dearborn is not going to be able to join us tonight. They are responding to a fire in town.
Oh, let's start here then. Uh, and then later we'll have Don Holland check in with us. Uh, but basically, this is an open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen, we've been asked and advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. The Long Meadow Select Board is convened by Zoom webinar as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This is a no chat or Q and A function. For resident comments, using the Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If members of the public would like to speak during the resident comment, please use the Ray, raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will unmute you and give you permission to speak. If you joined by webinar, uh, join the webinar by phone, dial nine to raise your hand. Each member of the public who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only, and each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless they know it otherwise. The ground rules are I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name and phone. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that generates accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote will be taken in this meeting and will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you for being patient through that process. And as we look at our agenda, the first order of business is, uh, looking at the status of COVID nineteen. We'll have a, an update, and I believe that our town manager will give an update on COVID nineteen.
Yes, I'm happy to do that tonight. Uh, so our numbers as of this morning, we had fifteen active cases. This is a substantial decline from what we've currently been seeing. So that's a positive trend right now. And I think you all are aware, we're in the same status regarding our vaccination clinics. We are only receiving our second dose allotment. DPH will no longer be shipping us first dose allotments for the time being. We're hopeful that, uh, that may change with the announcement of the third vaccine becoming, uh, getting FDA, um, emergency use, use authorization, uh, but we don't have any more information on that yet. That changes the status of our vaccination clinics. Uh, and that, that's really all I have for an update on COVID nineteen tonight. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the board members on COVID nineteen? Okay, here, none? We move to none?
Tom, there was a question.
Steve Morantz, yes. Yes, he needs to be unmuted. Or maybe you can unmute yourself, Steve.
All right. Okay. Uh, yeah, Lynn, I thought I saw something go by about, uh, regional clinics being, uh, reactivated if we did something with other communities. Did you see anything like that go by?
Yeah, there's been a lot of conversation about that on our DPH calls. Um, and if there was more confirmation that a regional effort would guarantee vaccine, then we would likely be pursuing that. Um, unfortunately, we're hearing difference of, um, a difference of that occurring throughout the state with some of our colleagues, other places who have set up regional clinics. They're still not guaranteed vaccine, and it's a tremendous amount of work to go through if you cannot, um, allocate vaccine to make that work worthwhile. Um, but we do, we're open to anything as long as it does come with a vaccine guarantee.
Okay, uh, any other?
Yeah, Lynn, I, Lynn, yeah, I have one question, Tom. Lynn, is, they, they still propose shipping the second doses to our town?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then let's move on. Uh, we have a couple announcements. One announcement is that, uh, next week, the Select Board will be meeting, um, for two special meetings on Tuesday, the ninth, and on Wednesday, the tenth. The ninth, the, uh, our town manager, Lynn Simmons, will, um, give a presentation of the budget, uh, to the Select Board, and then on the tenth will be a meeting with the, um, Finance Committee, and there'll be a public presentation where residents from the community can make public comment. I know that, uh, our last meeting, we had some folks who commented about, um, funding for the daycare and for the, um, that's happening, you know, in Greenwood. And so we just want to make clear, we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. Um, we want to make sure people have accurate information about that. It's, it's not a total closing of childcare services. And so then we'll talk about it tonight, and then on Wednesday, if people will have some comments, that would be great. Um, the other announcement I have, and I, I believe we have a visitor, uh, with us. I don't see her on the, oh, Lynn would find her. But, uh, perhaps you could find Evelyn Humphries, Forest Lynn, is she there?
Yep, moving her over now.
Okay. And then would I be able to share the screen at one, some point also?
Yeah, you should have access to do that already.
Okay, great. Okay, so, uh, we have Evelyn Humphries is a student at Long Meadow High School, and, uh, every year Business West recognizes local women of impact. The honorees are local college presidents, CEOs, and city officials. This year, Evelyn Humphries, who was a student at Long Meadow High School, was chosen as the first young woman of impact for her volunteer work with Girls Incorporated, Rachel's Table, and the Ronald McDonald House. Um, I am going to give her a citation, and so let me just see if I can pull this up and share the screen. Hold on, Evelyn, and then I'd really like you to, uh, to say something. Let's see, here we go. And this is the share. So this is our, uh, certificate that we have put together for you. We will be sending it to you. Um, but basically, uh, we've asked you to join us, Evelyn, at this meeting, to receive the certificate achievement from the town of Long Meadow, uh, for your compassionate service to the community and for receiving this award from Business West. The last recipient of this achievement award, uh, was a few years ago to a young woman. Maybe you've heard of her, Bryn Cartelli. Um, um, I don't know, Evelyn, have you heard her before? Are you there? I hope we can get some sound for her.
Hi, sorry about that. Yes, I do know Bryn Cartelli.
Oh, good. I figured you would. Uh, she's probably a classmate of yours at some point. But, uh, yes, she's the last person who got a, a citation from us, and so you're in good company, and, uh, congratulations, and thank you for joining us. I wish we could give you this certificate in person, and, um, would you just just like to share with us a little bit about some of your motivations for, um, for these kinds of activities that you were recognized for?
Um, I would love to. So hello, everyone, and thank you so much for having me here tonight to recognize me for my community service. Throughout the pandemic, I've had the pleasure of working with the Girls Link of the Valley to create Project Red, a project that collects and donates personal hygiene and menstrual products to people in our community that need them. Um, some other organizations that I've had the pleasure to serve are the Rachel's Table Teen Board and the Ronald McDonald House, where I work alongside a great number of my peers that are also motivated to serve our community. Um, I would like to thank Long Meadow High School, and specifically Mr. Landers, Mr. Dunkerly, and Mrs. Corbett for supporting me and spreading the word around the LHS community. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Allentuck, my friends and family, and our town for rallying behind me with their overwhelming support, not only in voting for me in the Business West competition, but for being there for me every step of the way. So thank you so much for recognizing me.
All right, well, thanks. And, and what is it that motivates you to do this? Did you, have you always been a person who volunteered?
Um, yes. Uh, I've been fortunate enough to grow up in a family where, um, we recognize that we should give back to those that are less fortunate than ourselves. And I think it all began, uh, during the tornado in two thousand. I don't remember what year it was, but I was second grader, and I decided to create a lemonade stand with the help of my family to raise money for the tornado victims. And so I think that it's been a part of my life forever. So my family definitely motivates me.
Oh, great. Well, thank you for joining us, and, uh, we wish to, we, we hope to hear more, more good things that you do, and, and, and good luck to you in your future. Thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. All right, and, uh, Lynn, was there other announcements that you wanted to share?
Yes, we had a couple others. Um, a reminder about the town census. They were mailed out in January. If you could return those as soon as possible. Uh, the twenty twenty-one recycling and yard waste stickers are available for purchase now. There's information on the town website about that. Uh, dog licenses are also available now. Um, you can renew those online um, or using your town census form, and, uh, information is available on the town website about that. And nomination papers are available until March twelfth to pick up. The deadline to submit them is March sixteen. Open positions for the town election are moderator, two select board seats, two school committee seats, and one planning board seat. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, well, we hope people are, uh, two things. One is that people will be running for offices. We, we never have too many people running, and, uh, and then the other thing is that if someone knocks on your door and, and looks for a signature, and hopefully you'll be willing to, uh, accommodate them so they can get on the ballot. It's, it's not a commitment to voting for them. Um, next, we have resident comments. Uh, do we have anyone who's identified?
Do have someone in the chat. Um, I'll make them a panelist if you, Tom, can remind them how they just raised their hand, and I'll convert them.
Yes, uh, there is a little icon on the bo, in the, sort of the center of the, um, the screen you're looking at, and you will see a raised hand. If you could hit that, Lynn will be able to recognize you.
All right, so our first, um, resident is, is here now.
Okay. And just please state your name and, um, and your address.
Um, can you, yeah, I'm on, okay. So, good evening. Thank you all for this opportunity. I appreciate it. Um, I wanted to take a moment.
Could you just say?
Oh, yes. Oh, Andrea Chason, two thirty-six Crestview Circle, and I am co-chair of the, um, Long Meadow Earth Day, and I'm here to make an announcement about, uh, an upcoming Earth Day event in which, uh, members of Long Meadow, uh, along with, um, participants from the town are organizing to help do a cleanup of the eleventh, uh, from one to four. And we're going to, and with the rain date of May second, and we're looking to, um, have as many volunteers as possible come out, and so we have been connecting to every town committee and, and commission that we can reach as well as the school system and various, um, organizations throughout, uh, Long Meadow have had a very good response. So I want to invite every member of the Select Board to participate on this because it's a really great opportunity. We've identified many, um, uh, public areas, parks, uh, um, conservation areas that will be, uh, mostly sending teams out to, well, uh, to actually pick up trash, and we are going, of course, be working with the town with regard to COVID restrictions that will, uh, guide, uh, the participants in terms of masking and distancing. Um, so the other aspect of this is that having listened to this lovely young lady, Evelyn Humphries, I just also want to let you know that the, uh, high school has some, we have a number of incredible young high school people who are already volunteering, two of them from the Climate Change Club, and they have been doing some amazing work, and the enthusiasm of the young people in this community is really, uh, just wonderful to see and to enjoy. So I hope, uh, that we can get as many volunteers from, uh, the Select Board in any, um, uh, public relations and, uh, advertising and circulating and influencing you can do to get people to volunteer. Will be very much appreciated. There will be, um, two ways of signing up. One is going to be through, um, uh, through a connection through longmeadow.org, Earth Day twenty twenty-one, and there'll be a link to a signup sheet. And the second way is going to be on, um, this I don't know. I'm going to just tell you what the students have told me, a QR scan code that's going to be part of some method of social media. Not familiar with it. I probably have used it, but I can't actually, uh, tell you exactly what it is, except it looks like a scam code that comes on your phone, and you can hit it and go right into the link to sign up. So, um, thank God for these young people is all I can say. So I'm hoping we'll see you April eleventh, rain date, May second.
Right, and Andrea, just, um, is there a meeting place that people will have where they go to high school or the town green?
What we're going to plan on doing is, um, we talked a little bit about that. We're thinking that the most effective way is to have preorganized teams, which will have designated spots to meet throughout the town, and we'll have done an organization around that. Um, we are, um, inviting Senator Markey. His office will be represented. Uh, we are going to be reaching out to Senators Lesser and, um, Representative Ash. So it may be that we end up with some sort of meeting spot, maybe in front of the high school, because I know that, um, one of the things we've talked about, particularly for the young people, is some recognition coming, uh, to the Climate Change Club, and so I think that there may be some, there's going to be some need to make a presentation. So that will be finalized, uh, in the next couple of weeks. We have a steering committee, and our next meeting is on the seventeenth, and we'll be able to, um, put out as much information at that point. We're hoping to have a, a real head count of volunteers by March twelfth. But at this moment, we're not necessarily planning on one specific spot.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you. Um, and we'll move on. Uh, do we have any other folks who want any other resident comments, Lynn?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised at the ti, at this time.
Okay, so we'll move on. Now, at seven thirty, we have to open a public hearing on fuel storage, so we will come back to that. Um, perhaps we can do the interviews for the audit committee. We have a couple of folks who are, uh, hopefully here to join us. And if you could unmute them, why don't we start with Joseph Santinello, who is applying for the audit committee? Is Mr. Santinello here? See him, Lynn, or?
Someone with that last name is here, and I've made them a panelist and asked them to unmute.
Okay. Is it Joseph Santinello? Can you hear us? Oh, he has to unmute. You see, I just, um, unmuted, all right?
You hear me?
Yes, I can.
It's, I'm not Joseph Santinello. I'm Ralph Santinello.
Oh, okay.
So I'll mute myself again.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so, uh, maybe Joseph will show up, uh, soon. The other person is the Historical Commission. Uh, Thomas King is looking for a spot on there. Is Mr. King this?
Hi.
Hello. Thank you for joining. Uh, give us your name, your address, and then tell us a little bit about, uh, your interest in the Historical Commission.
Absolutely. Uh, thanks for having me. I'm Tom King. I'm at seventy-three Virtue Avenue.
And so, um, what made you consider joining this committee?
Well, um, I, uh, saw that there were a couple of openings. I joined the last meeting, um, in addition to some great projects. It seems like pretty fun group, committed group, um, very drawn to the neighborhood here, the Circle Park and, uh, uh, the history. So, um, I thought it would be a nice opportunity to, uh, give a little to the town.
Great, great. Yeah, I, I, I talked to a neighbor the other day, and they said they, um, do a printout on all the houses, and they walk up and down Route five, and they, with their family members, and they just talk about each house and, and the history of it and so forth. It's kind of a fun thing. Um, so, uh, any questions from board members? Mr. King? Want to hear anything? I, I do notice that you were, uh, at Smith College, at the School for Social Work. I'm a social worker, and I was actually a, uh, a thesis advisor, I, I think in ninety-four.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Fascinating. I had a woman named, um, Lynn, uh, no, what was her name? Nell Weinhooven up, and she was, I had to drive to, um, Williamsburg, uh, to meet her. She was a really, a neat person. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a nice experience. Well, it'll be a nice change to be on Historical Commission compared to the tasks that you have, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It won't be a crossover. Um, but thank you for, uh, your interest and.
Thank you.
Tom, I had a question.
Oh, yes, Mark.
Yeah, thank, Mr. King, thanks for, for applying. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of the difference between all our, our historical groups. We have Historical Commission, Historical District Commission, and the Historical Society. So it sounds like you were at a Historical Commission hearing, but you are aware of the, the, the wider breadth, I would say, of the historical commission relative to the others?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Gold, for that question. It, um, absolutely, I do. It's, uh, actually, the confined of the commission is really appealing to me. Um, as, uh, um, as it was alluded, my, my work in nonprofits can be a little, uh, overwhelming with the fundraising. So actually, I, I applaud the Historical, uh, Society's work. The commission feels like a better fit for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. Uh, any other questions? Okay, so, uh, we will, uh, Thomas will make a decision at, at our next, uh, scheduled meeting, uh, in two weeks from now. And we'll let you know, you know, we have, it looks like we have. uh in two weeks from now and we'll let you know, you know, we have, it looks like we have a spot, but we'll check with you then, okay?
Sounds wonderful, thanks for this opportunity, appreciate it.
Okay, thanks for coming tonight. Any sign of uh Mr. Santinello, Joseph?
None.
Okay, well, we will move on, um you know, we could reschedule for a future meeting and um the next thing is, we have a few minutes for select board comments. Is there any select board comments this evening? I see Mark Gold, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Tom, I just had two updates for the select board. First one is on our procedures manual, I was a little uh behind in getting what I said I was gonna do, was collating things, but I did send to Debbie and Lynn today the collated version of all, which has all the comments in it without any edits, just put all the comments together, so hopefully we'll be able to put that on the next agenda, so I want to let people know about that. The second thing I was just gonna comment on very quickly is the sewer rate issues. That we had, we've had several discussions about it, and I just wanted to let every, the select board mostly, but also to the public to know that I've been, I've been working on the sewer rate potentials and uh potential scenarios. Uh I've had a couple of discussions with Richard Foster about that and we seem to be going in a couple of different directions, put together a whole bunch of different scenarios and my expectation is that by the, certainly the next meeting, we'll have a a a document to prepare, to present to the select board, to look at the 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 options and what those options mean in terms of usage and costs and things that are important to the select board. My hope would be that we go through that, perhaps answer questions, talk about it a little bit, uh and then uh based on some of the things we've heard and seen, I'd like to suggest that, and we'll see what the select board thinks, but we go to a public hearing from that point and then from a public hearing, come back and have the select board, if they choose to, to make changes to the sewer uh fee structure based on both the the analysis that Richard Foster and I have done as well as the uh uh the public comments, so I just wanted to bring that, give you that update because people will be asked if there's any progress being made on it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh I see Steve Morantz raising his hand.
Yeah, I just add in terms of that uh comment there, Mark, yeah, one of the things that has been discussed at the select board particularly by Richard is uh forming a task force. What you just described did not include a task force. Is that something that um has happened in your opinion, is gone by the wayside, I I'm I I don't know if they're mutually exclusive, I, you did not mention that specifically, that's one of the things that's been brought up three or four times prior.
They, there's been no task force, uh you know, was more more than a, more of a subcommittee than a task force to this point, but I would think that the uh the the use of a public hearing would give that kind of kind of an input that we expect to get from a task force.
Okay.
Yeah, Tom, I have, I have a comment, Tom.
Yes, Mr. Foster.
I personally think it would like to have been easier for us to put the man on the moon than it is to finish the study. Um I don't think, I I no one will ever know how many hours been put into it, but it's it's eye-opening. Uh Mark and I are in constant communication, we're we're kind of independently looking at the same thing and comparing notes on the end of the day or or in the morning, sometimes in the middle of the night. Uh it is wrapping up at this uh, Mark and I were just today communicating, it's it's in the process of trimming down. I think when the product is done, uh like Mr. Morantz just said, possibly the public forum will be the place where it can be put out to the public and we can have a a a real welcoming, open debate on it. Uh basically what Mr. Gold and I've been doing is trying to eliminate all the sticking spots. And I think we've done a pretty good job because we've debated the living daylights out of just about every piece of this puzzle. I know there's a lot of interest in it and I and I agree with Mark, I think we're right at the verge of uh putting this package together and and delivering it to the town.
Okay, thank you. Um actually, Mark, if you can hold, Mark Strange wants to make a comment, but it's seven thirty, which I want to start this public hearing, so and then we'll come back to resident comments if you if you don't mind, thank you. Alright, so uh I need a motion to open a public hearing on fuel storage at one seventy Dwight Road.
I'll move.
Okay, in a second?
Back in.
Okay, and so we have a uh number of documents, including a a fuel storage license application and um quite a number of documents along with that. And this is pretty normal, we had fuel storage at the DPW that was down on um Ponview Road, Ponview, and we will need it at this place. Um so I don't know who wants to talk about this or move to a motion um to accept this uh these fuel storage tanks. I guess we probably should discuss it and then after we close the hearing, look for a motion. Any questions or comments on the fuel storage issue? Okay, Steve Morantz.
I I will comment, um I believe that uh an official from the town of Long Meadow signed off on one of the documents and that signature is not, whoever signed that, that the sig- just a question, not the signature, it's not particularly I know, you know, it's it's a signature that that is not legible at all. There's no way you could ascertain the name of that person signing it. And I don't know if that makes a difference and if that's the way this person always signs every document and so it's a well-known fact, but the signature is not legible. At the way you could know the name of the person signing the document.
They have a title, uh Lieutenant from the, is it the FPO or something, but uh yeah, the document is the application for standard permit.
Um I'm fairly um certain that's um Fire Prevention Officer Carl Sierra. Uh and he was supposed to be in attendance tonight along with Chief Dearborn to speak to this application, but they're both uh at that fire uh that's occurring right now. Uh so I do have um DPW Director Mario Maza here if you had questions specifically about the um fuel storage. But uh um Steve, um to your point, we can definitely type his name under that signature so that it it is legible.
Thank you, Lynn. Um yeah, Mario, do you have anything to share with the board um in regards to this license, I mean?
I think it's a good idea, um and maybe Paul can attest to it after I'm done, but uh when we buy it in bulk, when we, you know, fill our own tanks like we did at Ponside and like we plan on doing at Dwight Road, I think we save a third of what we normally budget for fuel, so makes sense from that. I mean, for emergency operations, have an ability to have the fuel on hand, not having it go out of town if all of our local uh gas stations are closed. So it makes sense to me. I recommend it.
Okay, great. And um and we have a number of certificates of compliance and the tanks have been pressure tested and all of those sorts of things. Uh is there any other questions from the select board?
None for me.
Okay.
I I have a question.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I I I don't know if it's for you, Mario, or for for uh Lynn. It and when we had the fuel stationed at Ponside, not only the DPW used it, but the the Police Department, Fire Department used it. We intend that that will happen also with this fuel rainfall.
I I hope so. I I'd like to have the activity, you know, during the night hours when we're not there, especially the cruisers, but fires welcome too. And of course, they'd be saving the same money that we're saving by fueling up at the bulk rate as opposed to going to wherever they normally go to get fuel.
Right, but but I assume the fuel dispensing system has the same, you know, put in accounting codes or whatever is that the the old one had so that we can track where what goes where, right?
Yes, if that's what you're asking, I missed that, I apologize, but yes.
No, no, I don't, no, that wasn't my original question, but yeah, that.
It does have that, we have the ability to track who's fueling, how much they used, and then we can charge back to those departments about what was used.
Alright, last question is, do we have, I know we no longer have, we're no longer use the fuel station at Ponside Road. Was that ever decommissioned formally and what does that mean in terms of licensing? Do we have to file something with some organization that it was decommissioned? I know it had an above-ground tank, not a below-ground tank, but still I would think there's something you gotta do when you close a a fuel s- storage tank.
We we did that um I think a couple of years ago, it it needed thousands of dollars of repair, knowing that the new one was being built. It didn't make sense to to put that money into those repairs, so actually dug the tanks out, we did all those documents, it it it's all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, great. Any further questions? Alright, so I'd love to close the public hearing for the fuel storage um and then look for a motion um to accept the application.
I think we need a motion to close the hearing.
To close the public hearing?
So move.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
Okay, and then Deb will do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so the hearing's closed and um looking for a motion to accept the application.
So I'm on it.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh Deb, will you do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and so we'll go back to uh select board comments and Mark Strange, I thank you for waiting, um please go ahead with your comment.
Yes, though uh unless things have changed, I think this is Debbie's uh final select board meeting. So I just wanted to publicly thank her for all that she's done for us. Um she's invariably kind and helpful and very patient and I wish her the best of luck in her next endeavor. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Alright, great, yeah, and I'm sure other folks are are feeling the same sentiment, um and I definitely was it's sad to hear she's, this will be our last meeting, I mean, uh since she's been taking over the note-taking for these meetings, I don't think we've had one complaint. She's done everything perfectly, uh and that's that's saying something because we used to have quite a bit of trouble. Um but yes, Deb, you know, Deb, you know, the the select board is gonna be lost without you for a little while, um you've done so much to help us you know, be in touch about what what what's going on in town and um, you know, helping us with any of our requests for for information and and where to find it, or you will pull it out for us and then uh like even in tonight's meeting, you know, um for giving out this award for Evelyn Humphries, you know, you you actually wrote something up in the announcements, I didn't see it till after I had written my thing, but uh you know, we appreciate your work and we wish you the best of luck in your next job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and uh so next we go to our town manager's report. Tom? Yes.
Yeah, I have one more, one more comment I needed to make.
Okay.
I don't know if the point, I don't know if the point got across during our comments when we were, when I was ricocheting off what Mark had said.
Yes.
Uh the the board, I think, should strongly consider uh setting up a special meeting for the review of this proposal that's gonna be coming forward. I think it's gonna be involved enough that it's gonna require some dedicated time for us to sit and be able to show all, have Mark show all the documents he's got and the graphs and and be able to explain that uh in in kind of an unlimited time format instead of being pressed into three or four minutes to speak. Uh Mark Gold, I think you agree, we, the more we've talked about it, it's that involved, that there's a lot of questions that need to be answered. If it's in a public meeting, a special meeting, then the general public will be listening also, so I think it'd be very, very beneficial for us to schedule it.
Okay, thank you. And Mark Gold, did you want to say something?
Not, nothing, uh Richard's kind of covered it.
Okay, alright, so we'll look on schedule or something like that, uh either later March, um something like that, so, thank you. Um so now we move to the town manager's report, Lynn Simons.
Thank you. Um so uh um an announcement that our DPW Director Mario Maza has submitted a letter of resignation. Mario was selected as the new DPW Director for the town of Agawam. His last day with Long Meadow will be March nineteenth. We wish Mario the best on this new opportunity. The job description is being reviewed and will be posted as soon as possible. A shared scre- streets grant um has been submitted for Linwood Drive. DPW Engineering has taken a look at this application again and revised it slightly and has resubmitted for Mass DOT's Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant Program. We had previously submitted this uh over the summer and we're not successful, so we're hoping this time around we will be. Uh the final open space, open space and recreation plan was approved by the state. We had a few um minor tasks that still needed to be completed and they, we were given conditional approval. We now have final approval and uh a thank you to uh Town Engineer Tim Keen and Chair of the Conservation Commission Al Laxo for fin- seeing those last tasks through. And um I'm gonna echo off of what your select board comments were regarding the administrative assistant to the select board and the town manager. Um Debbie is leaving us, this is her last week here with us, so that tonight is her last meeting. Um and she's joining the town of East Long Meadow as Administrative Assistant to Town Manager. Really want to thank her for all her years of service, but especially over this last year and a half. Um she is, you know, you all know, but the public may not know that her and I share an office together, it's just the two of us in here. Um and she has a lot of history and I rely on her a lot for uh answers and I'm going to miss her and her um knowledge uh that she has in Long Meadow and the practices that have um happened here. Um we have posted the position, hoping applicants in the next week or two, uh and we'll have a temporary fill-in for Debbie um while we work to fill the position permanently. And I did have a note here in my treasure collector report that we had appointed um a new treasure collector. Um unfortunately, um that uh I'm I'm not able to positively um and make that announcement tonight. Um we did select someone who started last week and um but um left, left our employment late last week um for a different opportunity. Uh so he um will not be fulfilling the role of treasure collector, but we will be re-advertising and um going back out to interview for that position, so I look forward to bringing you somebody soon.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have a report tonight, Tom.
Alright, any questions for town manager on her report? Okay, hearing none, we'll we'll move on. Our our first issue of old business is the approval of the minutes from our um February sixteenth meeting. We've got a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move, we approve the minutes of the select board meeting for February sixteenth.
I can.
Okay, Richard, uh any discussion? Hearing none, that will go to a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the zone change discussion uh with the Planning Board Chair who is uh who's with us this evening and um so Don Holland, are you here on the phone? And um so this process has been started, there is a request for zone change for the property on Williams that is on the corner of uh Redfern and um so, you know, we, I guess you know, when is your, I, the only question I have for you was when is gonna be your next meeting and when will be an open hearing uh for people in the public who might want to comment?
Hey Tom, is this on agenda?
Yes, it's called B, Zone Change Discussion with Planning Board Chair for nine one six Williams Street.
Why isn't my B say Request for Extension of Liquor License for Outdoor Dining?
I don't know, my agenda, that may be looking under new.
Yeah, she's eleven B, eleven B.
Eleven B, old business, because we discussed.
Okay.
Okay, because so folks may want to comment on this, uh what's your uh, what's your timing on this gonna be?
The public hearing will take place on April seventh, that's the first Wednesday of April, followed by a regular meeting the same night and there'll be a vote taken at that time.
Okay, and and that vote will basically say that Okay, and and that vote will basically say that, what's that vote say in regards to the uh zoning change?
It is typically a vote on whether or not to endorse the proposed zoning change.
Okay, and if, even if it isn't endorsed by your board, um can they move forward to the town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
There's one thing, if the planning board votes not to endorse and the proposed zoning change doesn't go through at the town meeting, the town doesn't approve it, then it's two years before the uh before the applicant can move to have a new zoning change.
Great, thank you for reminding us of that and then uh are there any questions for members of the board? For Mr. Holland in regards to zone change process that's been started? Uh I see Mark Gold.
Just a quick question, uh how, do you plan on doing anything out of the ordinary for advertising this public hearing?
No, that's, that's a good point, perhaps um I should get LC TV to do compose something.
Yeah. Oh, good, yeah. We generally put on the website um and then if we put it on the, on the um, yeah, LCTV, that's, that's pretty usual. But any other questions? Okay, and then uh I assume the only other thing I would say about this uh zone change is that I make the assumption at some point that um we're receiving more information um from the people proposing the the change um in regards to you know, why we should consider working with this developer on that property at this meeting that's scheduled in the fall. And that's it. Well, thank you, Don, for joining us.
I seen you all.
Okay, bye now.
Bye.
Uh, the next is the budget review update. Uh, we have fiscal year twenty-two state aid numbers and Paul, I would guess I would turn that over to you to.
Very quickly, on the state aid numbers, when we compare FY twenty-two to FY twenty-one, it um, so it's, it's a little bit complicated this year because, as folks know, the state did not set their their own fiscal year budget until late in December. Um, we were allowed to use a number when we set the tax rate in early December. Um, by the time the state came with our final numbers, um the net, I always talk about net general fund revenue and again, um, that's the amount that really goes in into, um it had dropped forty thousand dollars because we had basically been assessed a higher amount on our assessments. Um, but regardless of that, when we compare what what I utilized in FY twenty-one as compared to what the governor's numbers are currently stating, the, the general net state aid money for FY twenty-two jumped slightly, it's about sixty-four thousand dollars. Um, hardly a lot of money uh in comparison to FY, not necessarily FY twenty-one, the pandemic here, but FY twenty and nineteen. We were in the three and four hundred thousand dollar range. Um, so a sixty-three thousand dollar increase is uh barely a percent and would certainly had some impact on how Lynn and I had to prepare the budget and getting the final recommendations, so. Um, those numbers will further be discussed when we talk about the budget, but again, it was a very minor increase of less than one percent coming back to the general fund for net state aid in FY twenty-two at this point in time. Now, historically, I will say that the legislature normally pumps up the governor's numbers. Uh, necessarily too, too early to predict any type of of that in- increase, um but if the history proves itself, uh that would be very good for the town, no matter what we got, anything is very helpful.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, any questions for members of the select board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to new business. And uh the first item will not be dealt with, um the tax title custodian because that person's no longer employed with the town. The next is we have a request for the extension of liquor license for outdoor dining. And we have requests from, um, well, we have three documents, was the governor's orders regarding outdoor seating. And then two requests, one from um Max's, Max Burger, and the other one from um Posto Restaurant, Restaurant, and they would like us to extend their liquor, liquor permit uh beginning April first. Um, I think they both wanna start the same day, yes, and uh to resume outdoor seating. Uh Lynn, um, or actually Deb, you usually talk about these licenses and uh all the information that's required has been turned in, I take it?
Yes, there isn't much for them to do other than make a request, um because the governor's order is, there's still an extension on it where just the LLA has to approve it. The extension for the, the governor's order goes um uh from November first, twenty twenty, for any period up to and until sixty days after the end of the state of the emergency.
Right, and the state of the emergency is continued, right?
Yes, we're still in the state of emergency.
Okay, great. Um, I don't know if the board has any questions, it sounds like the um the folks who own these establishments or run these establishments may be available. Um, are there any questions for the people who are extending, ex- uh who submitted the extension for the board, any questions? Yes, Mark Gold.
Uh, I don't have a question, I just have a comment, but one thing that concerns me about putting tents up is if there's still snow in the parking lot and and generally the Long Meadow shops puts their snow on the, I think it's the west side of the parking lot, takes up a lot of spaces. I'm hoping it doesn't snow anymore and the snow will all be gone if we get a couple of days of rain, but I'd like to, you know, I, I think we ought to approve it, they, they, the tents worked out well for the town, for them, but I'd, I'd like to make a contingent upon them getting all the snow off the parking lot, so that means that if they're gonna take up those parking spaces with tents, they gotta make sure there's plenty of parking on the west side of the lot and that we don't have a bunch of spots taken up with, with snow.
Okay, and I, I think that that's really not something that these, you know, they're just renters in the plaza. Who would really be the owner of the uh property that would have to attend to that. Any other questions or comments?
What, what does that mean, Tom, that they, that, that we can't put the erection of tents contingent upon the parking lot being cleared?
Well, I think that we would, um, I guess we could, I, I mean, it isn't up to them, they, they, it's not their parking lot. It's the owner of the uh, the shops, you know, that has that. So we'd be putting contingent on renters that they couldn't fulfill, it would be based on, you know, uh, you know, unless it's, I know there's.
Putting the tents in somebody's parking lot, if it's not their parking lot, then, then the owner of the, the Long Meadow shops is putting, letting them put the tents in the park, all I'm thinking is, you know, this, this is probably a moot point because hopefully there won't be snow. But I just know that if there's snow there, the whole west side of that parking lot's not available for parking, and we lose like a number, fifty spots, forty spots, like that with these two tents.
Well, I, I don't know what other board, other members of the board have any comments on this adjustment.
I, I would have thought, Tom, personally, uh, uh Mark's got a point, it, it, it chances are it's not gonna happen, but it could. And it, it does fall under the responsibility of the uh, the plaza owner, that, that's for certain. I would think that we should be able to get some assurances from, from them that they'll take care of the snow problem.
Okay, I guess I'm not sure how that affects the board specifically, but.
Well, it, it, it's a catch twenty-two because you gotta permit to put a tent out there which is gonna remove parking spaces right now that are allocated to general public. And we're in the winter and we normally lose quite a few spots because of the snow that is stacked up, because they don't, they don't remove the snow from that lot, they park it over in the corner. And I think that's what Mark's referring to, if we, if we have an odd case, we could lose a lot of spot. Chances are it's not gonna happen. But I, I think it was, uh, I, I don't think it's out of the ordinary to, to have brought that exemption or that question to the board in consideration of this. Uh, you're right, it's not, it's not Posto's problem, it's uh, it's the management team of the um, of the plaza itself.
Yeah, I mean, I can't see how, like, if this kind of a stipulation went before the town council, I don't want to see how we would be able to enforce it. I don't know if Lynn has any comments on something like this.
I don't think it was a town council question, Tom, it was a, town council's not gonna prove this permit, the select board is. It was concern brought about by the select board for public safety. It's not a town council issue, it's it's, it's to the owner of the plaza.
Yeah.
I mean, some has to be responsible for the safety of the occupants.
All right, well, I just, I think that um it's just a little beyond the scope of, of what the select board should be doing, I think that, you know, we can make recommendations, but I don't think we can make any contingencies that, you know, would affect their applications. I, that's my opinion, I don't know what other people feel. I see Mark Strange, yeah.
So, so what would the, um, we would approve the, the liquor license extension, um with the condition that if there was snow on the ground on April first, it'll be cleared properly?
If the, not, my fear, thinking, Mark, was that if there's snow blocking the parking lot, space in the parking lot, that it would be cleared prior to erecting tents and taking away additional, additional spots, so yes, essentially.
Uh, is there any reason for us to believe that that wouldn't happen?
Well, generally, it's not been their practice in the ba- past to remove snow from the parking lot, they just pile it up on the west side. So, y- y- you know, over by the, where the, the high school baseball field is, there's probably, depending on the winter, there's at least two rows, sometimes four rows of parking that are lost because of positive snow. There've been times that it's been like that till mid-April, or sometimes late April. And, and I'm just thinking that if you take away a bunch of parking spots with a tent, I like to make sure that there's parking on the west side of the lot for people to utilize and move that, those spots, that's all.
So, so Mark, so you're saying that the condition would be that the, the owner of the shops would, would remove the snow and not just pile it?
Well, you know, I, I don't think he has to necessarily haul it away, but, but, you know, he's gotta make it situation so that it's not, it's not tying up uh parking spots. Now, there's probably places he can put it back against the fence or something like that, but, you know, they just take, you know, for good reason. I mean, I'm not, not, you know, criticizing them for doing it, I'm just saying that generally it doesn't matter because they don't need all the spots. But in this case, we're gonna need spots if we're taking them away. I mean, the, the, you know, our zoning bylaws require a certain number of parking spots based on the numbers square feet of, of retail space, and those tents cut into that number substantially and we're, you know, we're rightfully acknowledging and allowing those tents as an, you know, as a, an accommodation to keep those, those businesses going during a pandemic, and so, you know, one of the things that we're, I'm looking for is to just make sure that there's enough parking for the residents in town in those spots, in the, in that shopping center, that's all.
Yeah, Mark, I would say that, Mark Gold, I would say that that is, those are two separate issues. I, I think one is, you know, the extension, uh, you know, of, of being on an outdoor, and then if, at some point, you know, there's a shortage of parking, uh then the town should cite the owner of the building, but it has nothing to do with the residents who are applying for this extension.
So, so maybe a better question, Tom, is what is the process by which tents are erected? Because if that process by which the tents are erected is separate from a liquor license extension, then it may be that's the process that I wanna be concerned about. I mean, I have no problem extending liquor license, but somebody approves the erection of those tents, I don't know if it's lawfully or what it is, because clearly nothing in here says you're authorized to put up tents which are temporary structures. All this says is you're allowed to, to serve liquor outside, so maybe that's the process we wanna address.
I think that'd be a better way to go. I, I just don't think it's fair to the applicants to, to put this burden on them, they're, they're tenants of uh, of the shops.
Uh, Tom?
Yes.
Isn't um the permission to put the tents up to begin with coming from the owner of the parking lot? It's that, since they own the parking lot, the tents are gonna be in their parking lot. I mean, we can give them permission to ser- to, to serve, but it's the owner of the parking lot is the one that I assume says it's okay to do. I suspect when they had the farmer's market, they just don't show up and say, they don't come to us, they go to the, the, the shop owners, uh the owner of the, of the, the place, so. I think um, I, I agree that it's really two separate issues, I think we can say you can, you can have your license to do this, but the tent, the tent construction and who uses that parking lot is of the discretion of the owner of the parking lot, which is the Long Meadow shops, folks, not, not us, we don't own the lot.
But if, if, if a shopping, if a shopping lot doesn't meet the town's requirements in terms of number of ti- uh parking spaces, then, you know, that's something the town should enforce and, and make a comment about.
I, I would agree with that, yes, I agree.
Okay, so in, in view of our, in light of our discussion, I guess I'd look for a motion about uh re- extending the liquor license, uh which would start in uh April first, I believe, and um do we have a motion?
The motion is. Yeah, it's second, although the motion is not to extend, it's to uh allow the, it's not extending the liquor licenses, it, Tom, it's allowing this outdoor, outdoor license, uh to serve liquor outdoors.
Extension of our outdoor liquor license service for their tents um on Bliss Road. And it's for two, two requests of, I don't know if we need to take each one separately, Deb, any suggestions?
Yeah, uh, we are, um, it's an extension of the liquor license premise, because they're licensed for in the building right now and patios.
Okay.
So wherever alcohol is served, it has to be licensed, like on the golf courses, they have to list the holes, what holes their carts go out to. Um, so it is an extension of the premises.
Okay, and can we do these in one motion or do we have to, two separate motions?
Um, I don't see why you couldn't put them together, just list two different, you know, Max Burger and Posto. Um, it's up to you how you wanna do that.
Yeah, I, I mean, we've done this before with, you know, several different licenses, so.
Just to clarify, is, when, when would this, in your motion, you'll just need to put an end date, whether it's following the state of emergency of the governor or November first or?
Oh, April, November is a lot of time. Um, we've been doing about three months on each one of these. I don't know what the select board thinks, do you think should you, from April first, we do it through to the end of the governor's order? Well, it goes sixty days past the end of his, basically. So should we stick with that, perhaps that, um, you know, this would be, um, you know, a- any, we would extend it from, so I guess most would agree that we would vote to extend the outdoor service um license from April first up to a period and up to, uh, until sixty days after the end of the state of emergency. That could be one motion. What do people think of that?
Sounds fine to me.
Yeah, I think it's okay.
Okay, so Mark, you'll, you'll forward a motion and, and Steve, you'll second it?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, let's move on to a uh, a vote, uh Deb, roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, our next request is from Posto for liquor. Okay, our next request is from Posto for liquor license extended hours request. And we have um, five different documents on this, and um, and basically their licensing name is Extra Anjovis LLC, and they're requesting to be able to extend the uh, hours of service to um, right now, they stop at eleven P M, and they'd like to continue on weekdays until twelve, twelve A M, uh, which is midnight, and then Sunday, uh, this Sunday, Sunday through Thursday, and then till twelve thirty on Friday and Saturday evening. Um, I don't know, uh, Lynn, is all the, is there, again, this is just a letter request, there's no additional paperwork? That we need to review, correct?
Uh, all of the paperwork was on the agenda.
Okay.
It looked like there is a change of hours form that was permitted.
Yeah, alright, uh, any, any discussion on this um, request?
Um?
Yes, Mark Gold, yes.
Yeah, you know, I I asked, asked Debbie to go look at the hours of the other other restaurants in town that we give liquor license to and liquor licenses that we've given in the past. We've had a pretty good history of ending at eleven P M, Monday through Friday and midnight on, excuse me, eleven, eleven thirty P M on, on Saturday nights, and I'd like to suggest we, we stick to that. There's only, there's only, you know, Max Burgers and and El Posto are till eleven thirty on Saturday nights, their request is to go an extra hour to twelve thirty, and I'm not, uh, in favor of that.
Okay, any other comments or reactions?
So, so, so the other, so, uh, Mark Gold, so the other, uh, Ume and um, the meeting house, and those folks all are to eleven thirty, or whatever the hours are, um, that's, that that's been the standard as far as you know for, for in Long Meadow, those hours.
Those, those stores actually close at eleven, and that, and that's been our standard, but but they don't, they're not till eleven thirty on, on our, on uh, Saturday, Friday and Saturday.
Do we now present, or ever been anybody open later, historically before this time?
I'm not aware of anybody, we generally, we, we've had discussions about longer hours in the past, and not authorized it, we've had discussions about, if you were, maybe you weren't on the board, we had discussions about Sunday mornings and didn't authorize it. So, we've uh, had a bunch of discussions that have not passed, have not been approved in the past.
And these are the same hours for liquor stores as well, at the liquor stores in town, we know that?
I don't know that.
Good question, I don't know, do, this is where we're gonna be missing a lot when Deborah moves on. Deb, do you have any idea that liquor stores stay open until eleven? I don't think they stay up past that, do they?
Offhand, I don't know, I wanna say, no, they don't stay open that late, but I, I don't know offhand, I'd have to look up their licenses.
Right, well, if we had more people on the select board who drink heavily, they would know exactly, and so that's a good sign that we don't know what time the liquor, the package stores close, um. Now, one of the things, you know, and I thought this uh, over, uh, is that with the use of tents, um, you know, having extending our, uh, the liquor, the hours of serving till, um, you know, midnight, and um, you know, and then later in the weekend, you know, the tents, you know, people, it may interfere with people in the community, you know, we're basically, you know, a bedroom community, people come here, they sleep, I mean, you know, they, eleven o'clock, people don't wanna hear noise in the, and if these were indoor situations, that would be, I think I'd look at it a little differently, but it is because, you know, Posto has an outdoor tent, uh, that makes me look at it a little differently at this point in time, and um, so I would, you know, I recommend, you know, maybe not supporting this change at this point in time, only because it's gonna be outdoors, and um, you know, and we haven't had any public comment on this either. Any other comments? Okay, so, um, so the request, uh, we would need to take a vote on it, um, do I have a motion?
Well, I'll take most if we deny the request.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Richard, um. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote, Deb will call.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
No.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you for your, um, for the discussion on this. We now move to the quarterly investment report. Uh, so Paul Pesterzic, if you wanna make, give this to us?
This is the quarterly investment report for the quarter ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty, from the treasurer's office, um, yeah, we stated at the very beginning that we're in compliance with the policy provisions where no long-term investments are held, uh, for a period that would exceed five years. Individual bank balances of five million dollars are being adhered to. Um, if they do have bond proceeds, that amount is up to eight million, and we are adhering to that. Uh, all, all have a very big rating of green, which is the highest rating, so our banks are operating very safely and all our accounts are fully insured. Uh, the quarter continues to witness a drop in interest rates. We've been moving around money wherever we could, wherever we can get a better, a better rate of return. Um, again, within the, within the text of the cover sheet, there's a number of examples of the rates that have gone down, ten basis points, nine basis points, fifteen basis points, twenty basis points for certain banks. Um, we, we did find a new, I don't wanna say a new bank, but opened up a new account at a local bank earning a rate of point four or five percent, which isn't too bad, given these um, circumstances. Um, our lockbox is beginning to do a little bit better as we proceed. Um, we had lockbox collections for the quarter, about three point two million dollars, which is an increase to about four hundred thousand dollars. But more and more people are beginning to send in their um, payments to the town, to the lockbox, um, which again helps us. They do a lot of the processing, the deposits are made immediately, and then we sweep it from those accounts, put them into higher interest-bearing accounts, once we see that the um, amounts hit a certain level. Um, probably the best news is the investment income on our OPEB trust fund. Um, that's for the quarter itself, it was a very good quarter, as people know about the stock market and everything like that. Three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar earnings, um, for the year two thousand and twenty, we, our OPEB trust fund had a return roughly of about twelve and a half percent, uh, which is doing pretty good, um, and overall, since the inception, since December of two thousand and eighteen, we made deposits of our own money of about three point one million dollars, have interest earnings over that, over two years of seven hundred and six thousand dollars. Uh, so we continue to do pretty good, a lot better than we would have if we did our own internal investing. Um, and we will be making a, we have made a deposit last week, uh, of the F Y twenty-one appropriation, and then some assessments to the daycare program from last year, and the water and sewer program from last year. So we, we made a deposit last week of another half a million dollars into that trust fund, um, bringing up our total now at this point in time to well over four million dollars. We had earned roughly about forty-eight thousand dollars in revenue, um, from interest earnings over all the funds. Our beginning balance of twenty-three point one million, one point four million dropped to twenty-three point one, two million, dropping about twenty thousand dollars. Um, that's almost to be expected during the third quarter, as there is no other major revenue source other than the income taxes. So, we continue to have certainly a strong catch, well, at this point in time, and that will grow in the third quarter because of the first motor vehicle excise tax commitment, and also the water and sewer bills will be going out shortly, and some of those payments will be coming in by this quarter in March thirty first. I also provided you on the very last sheet to some of the history on the pension reserve investment that we have, it gives you a synopsis of where those rates are over time. Uh, again, I think it was a very wise choice that the town made to jump in with those people, again, the one-year return of a little over twelve and a half, three-year return, which we've been involved two of those three years of eight point eight percent, and then that very last page just gives you a synopsis of the uh, full fit, full calendar year of how the earnings went for the town of Long Meadow. Um, I would entertain questions if there are any regarding any of those amounts.
Okay, uh, it's more, any questions? Okay, I I did have a couple of comments, uh, one is, you know, uh, last, our last meeting, Richard Foster said that he was not seeking reelection, and um, I know that he really did a lot to promote, uh, putting money aside for OPEB, and hopefully, Richard, you feel very pleased with seeing this that just the, the re-return, close to, you know, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, thirty-five thousand, that's quite an, uh, return for the quarter, twelve percent, uh, so, you know, I, you know, a lot of times when we put time into these voluntary boards, we wonder, you know, do it really make a difference, and I, and members will see that the work we do, uh, really does make a difference, um, so I just wanted you to to know that. Uh, the other thing is, as far as the lockbox, you know, that sounds like it's catching on, and people can access using the lockbox through the town website, am I correct?
No, they usually get that, uh, um, our, whether they're real estate, motor vehicle excise, or water and sewer, they usually get a special envelope that if they wanted to send it in, it would go directly to the lockbox, um, post office box, uh, out in the central part of the state.
Right, that's right, it's, it goes at Worcester somewhere?
Um, I'm not quite sure, I think it's, it would be a little bit further east than that, but it, it, it's, it's, it remains in Massachusetts, not quite as far as Boston.
Okay, but yes, I mean, we talked about this before, um, Steve, you're asked.
Yeah, one question, Paul, in terms of these returns, um, and as well as the town has done, and as smart as the town was to move its investments, uh, correctly, among these are market-related, um, and should we have another uh, March twenty twenty, those numbers might not look as good, is that?
That, that, that is absolutely true, um, I will tell you the very first month that we invested in December of two thousand twelve, if you looked at the sorry, two thousand eighteen, if you looked at the stock market that month, it would have been down, and um, I guess I was a little bit nervous at that time about the long-term type of, of outlook, but at this point in time, I can smile and say it looks pretty good.
Okay, just, but, I, I am a believer that the markets go up when they go down, but this is not the straight line's not necessarily up, there will be some, some jigs and jags along the way.
Yeah, yeah, there'll be some bumps, yeah, alright, okay, any other questions for Paul, comments? Alright, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Move on to the town managers', um, fiscal year twenty twenty budget presentation, Lynn, take it away.
Thank you, um, I didn't know if you wanted me to read the budget message first, the memo, or just jump right into my PowerPoint presentation?
I would say go ahead with the PowerPoint, uh, unless anybody wants to see that. Uh, you'll, you'll cover it in the, with some of the subsequent, subsequent meetings next week, right?
Yes, yes, and all of this, um, just for the public who may be watching or interested, all of this is posted on the town website, uh, the budget message and the accompanying um, Excel spreadsheets are there as well. So let me share a screen and give you this presentation.
Thank you, appreciate your, your putting this together. Well, I think I'll be pleased, let's see.
Okay, is everyone seeing that?
Yeah.
Okay. See. Okay, so, um, uh, we're here for the F Y twenty-two town budget, um, town manager presentation. Give me one second, I'm, I'm having some Zoom issues, hold on.
Okay.
How did, does that, you see this cover slide there?
Yes, I do.
Okay. If I can get it to advance.
Yeah, we're seeing your presentation screen.
Okay, there, there, do you see the second page now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, great, thanks, first time doing a PowerPoint via Zoom. Um, so the F Y twenty-two budget highlights, um, this budget recommendation is balanced without the use of reserves. Uh, the budget uses the one point seven five percent of the allowable two and a half percent property tax increase under property, property and a half, and is less than the two percent used for F Y twenty twenty, and the one point eight seven five used in F Y twenty twenty-one. The twenty twenty-two budget funds the F Y twenty-two capital plan recommendations. And some notable items to uh, point out in this budget. Um, there is the addition of one full-time maintenance craftsman and one full-time grounds person. These are two key, key D P W positions that will help support the new facilities and the maintenance um, and upkeep associated with Wolf Swamp Field, and the two new facilities that are about to come online. Uh, the addition of up to two full-time custodians and the elimination of the private cleaning contract. The performance on the cleaning contract has been a concern for several years now, and with um, anticipating new, two new facilities coming online, the cost of the cleaning contract increasing, we determine that bringing this service in-house is our better option. Um, a reorganization of the administrative staff at the council on aging. Two part-time positions would be eliminated and replaced with a full-time clerk who would have increased responsibilities, recognizing increased needs at the new adult center. Um, it's anticipated that additional revenues will need to realize through rental of the facility and added programming that will help offset some of these associated costs. And fulfillment of the planning and community development director position that as was created in the charter, uh, those role will also have the additional function of being the assistant town manager. Building this position provides the town with key staff that will help us more aggressively pursue grants in the areas of energy, sustainability, climate change, uh, and also provide um, of overview, uh, for all departments so that we can make sure that we're um, meeting our green community requirements, uh, because it's just, it's townwide, not um, just by a department. And many of these grant opportunities that this position would um, be applying for also have additional uh, administrative costs that can be submitted to help capture some of the costs associated with that position. Also, in this budget is the Greenwood daycare program. We, it is included in here for F Y twenty twenty-two, but funded at approximately fifty percent of the costs as prior years. This is um, in recognition of the addition of, um, I'm sorry, it's in recognition of um, money to restart the program, um, in this COVID world that we're living in, there's many uncertainties, and um, this is a cautious approach to the restarting the program. Um, if more funds are needed, if the program materializes and staffing is um, is done for the, um, sorry, if staffing comes to fruition for the daycare program and enrollment reaches what we need it to, um, we can certainly put a warrant article forward at Fall Town Meeting for the additional funds to uh, make the program um, whole. Uh, but we're also, we're doing this in a cautious uh, manner because we, we just don't know what the um, September, you know, late summer, fall will look like with COVID and enrollment numbers for daycare. Um, and I should point out that all the costs of the program will be borne by the revolving fund, so if there's a loss of revenue, the revolving fund will need to cover that. The second bullet here on this page, uh, the Westcom assessment for F Y twenty-two, majority of that assessment is going to be covered by state nine-one-one grant. Majority of that assessment is going to be covered by state nine one one grant. Um, but there is a portion in the FY twenty two general fund budget that will cover anything that, uh, E nine one one will not cover. Or the second year in a row, the town's, um, funding for stores library meets the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners budgetary funding levels. And the pension assessment was relatively level for FY twenty two, which is largely attributable. Um, to the reduction in full-time dispatchers. So some of the budget challenges we have this year, uh, the unused levy capacity of three hundred eighty five thousand two twenty five. So meeting that one point seven five percent goal. Um, that's, that's the goal of the select board, the town manager and the finance committee. Um, that goal was met with the minimal increases in state aid and local aid receipts. But meeting that goal does entail a lot of belt tightening and, um, difficult conversations to get us to this point. Uh, certain projects and initiatives are not included in this budget because we needed to meet that goal. One of those is the OPEB, um, um, OPEB funding and the operational stabilization fund, as you see here on the slide. Um, another challenge upcoming in this year will be the negotiations for a majority of our collective bargaining contracts, which will open, um, in FY twenty two. And, um, certainly the uncertainties of the pandemic and the impacts that it's going to have on local receipts and revenues. And the demand on town departments in responding to the pandemic, um, is going to continue with us, um, into the new fiscal year. Uh, so what we could do with more if, if we were looking past that one point seven five. Uh, we could add two full-time firefighters or paramedics. These positions could be offset by the additional ambulance receipts, um, and also, uh, a corresponding reduction in the overtime line. Currently, there is some uncertainty on whether ambulance receipts are going to bounce back fully to what they were pre-pandemic. We feel pretty comfortable that they will, but there was enough uncertainty that, um, we did not put those in this FY twenty two budget. To meet the one point seven five percent. A second bullet here would be to increase the forestry budget to plan for costs associated with cleanups. Um, it's becoming incredibly evident that these larger, um, weather events that have an impact. On trees and damage to town facilities and, um, our tree belt and our residents, uh, homes. Um, are happening more and more frequently, and I, I do feel like we should be budgeting for a lot of that cleanup or some of that cleanup. In our, um, budget, but at this point, we are not able to increase it any more than what's already in there, um, with those budget constraints in place. Um, if we did go above one point seven five, we could fully fund the school committee budget request. Um, it is about ninety thousand dollars and change short of what the school committee asked for. And, um, we could increase the hours for the part-time admin position at the police department. Who help offer more public and walk-in hours, uh, and to remind you all, when we transitioned to Westcom. The dispatcher that was sitting there at the front lobby desk, uh, transitioned, those positions transitioned, transitioned to Westcom. So, uh, they do off, op, operate it with a, a dark station, um, outside the hours of nine AM and one PM. That's when there's someone there. We could expand those hours to offer more walk-in hours and not, um, have an officer need to come off the street to respond to someone that comes into the lobby. This is our summary over, for our year-over-year, so you can see some of the increases and, um. Or, you know, declines, uh, in each of these, uh, service areas. I don't, I'm not going to go through this whole list here, but if you had any specific questions on this, um, I'm happy to take them or I can wait till the end. They correspond directly with the, uh, memo, the budget message memo. And our available fund balances as of January thirty first here. And this is a slide generally for the public, but, um, there's quite a few upcoming budget meetings to hear about the FY twenty two budget. And then there's a public hearing on March tenth where the public can directly come and ask any questions that they have. Or make comments on the FY twenty two budget. Uh, a copy of this PowerPoint and all of the accompanying supporting documents are available on longmado.org forward slash budget. At the end.
All right, thank you, Lynn, uh, nice job. Um, I guess we'll see if there's any questions from select board members. I'm Mark Gold.
Uh, thanks Lynn, I, I have a few questions. First of all, I want to thank you and Paul for including in our packet at least the. DPW budget I'd asked for a bunch of years and last year I kind of got it. This year is great. Really, really is helpful. Problem is no good deed goes unpunished. So my first question is about that. That one, which is, is there a, a reason that the allocation to water and to sewer departments are different? You know, we generally had, you know, had done those pretty much the same. Is there a reason that water and sewer, I think the difference is like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars or something?
Mark, yeah, I, I, you have to give me the numbers because I don't, I didn't see that those allocations changed all that much.
No, it, it's not year-over-year, Paul. It's within the year, there's a bunch of things that are, you know, assigned to water and to sewer. And there are different amounts. And I thought they were based on equal, equals for everything from, you know, clerical and maintenance and staff. Labor and all that kind of stuff, and it, it turns out that they're different.
No, I, I, I don't think they were ever, um, when we did that study a couple of years ago. Um, I don't think it came out to be twenty five, twenty five. You also have to remember that, um, we also had, you know, the clerical is also. Just as an example, part of the, the recycling fund that potentially will be abolished at the end of this year. Other costs that are allocated to those funds too. Um, if, if there is any percent increase. From prior years of those, I, I would have to go back and speak with Mario on those.
I didn't see increases year-to-year. I guess I, my, my other question though is going to be just about the stormwater. We were going to take a look at how we allocate, you know, s- staff and time to stormwater. I think we talked even about redoing the study. It probably makes sense after, to wait till after we move to a new location. But it seems to me we need to find out what the real allocation is of staff to that department.
We, we could certainly ask them to redo what they did years ago with their time cards. Um, and then kind of get that perspective back in line. I would want to say, I want to say one thing about the stormwater fee. Um, there were two line items that Mario had asked for. They were new line items that, um, I did not pick up in, in, in the budget. Um, the one was for GIS, uh, maintenance and, and kind of services. The other one was for catch basin cleaning. Um, that catch basin cleaning was a large amount. It was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, however, I will say that some of that can be made up. Just through, uh, if I, as I told people, I would go, I would be going out to bid, or not bid, but to bond later on this fiscal year. And if I elongate the debt schedules, we can make up roughly half of that hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, there is at this point in time, and I can share the numbers either next week or today, but. The, the, uh, annualized sewer fee, as it currently stands, is fifty three dollars and twenty cents. Even with the budget as presented to you now, there is, um, and the slight increase in percentage that the fees would pick up. That, 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 um, annual. Costs for stormwater fees would, excuse me, would go up to sixty six dollars and sixty cents. So it, it, it's, and then I think you can see the bottom line for stormwater already, you know, fourteen percent. So it's going to be kind of tough to fit all that money into the stormwater. Um, given the, given, again, comments made last year, um, about the increase going in there and so on and so forth. So it's something that we're going to have to look at. And hopefully we can make some amends on that, um, catch basin cleaning line item. That, um, was basically discovered as omitted in the eleventh hour of this, of this budget process.
Thanks, Paul. I, I just point out that I, I looked at the storm sewer, my numbers were that, you know, we said that we wanted to. Get up to the full funding, if you will, and by, what did we say, uh, twenty thirty five? And so we've got another thirteen years. My calculations say we're right on target for doing that if we increase four percent per year. Because thirteen years will give us another fifty two percent. We're at forty seven percent now, so that. Get her, get us right to where we want to be. So it seems you're right in the tra- trap for that storm, storm, uh, fund.
The, the actual percentage is used in FY twenty one, we're forty two point five. In FY twenty two, it went to forty six point six one. So it went up a little over four percent of our budget.
We're going to have to continue with that four percent, that's my point.
Oh, no, I, I, absolutely. I, I, yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay, um, last thing I just wanted to comment, I was going to channel my inner Marie Angelidi's comment about, about full-time employees. And, and one of the things that we have in there is, you know, full-time custodians and talking about going to full-time people at Greenwood Center. And full-time people add a lot of pension and OPEB, eventual OPEB cost to it. And I think Marie would be, uh, not happy if I didn't say something in her name about the need to, to really watch. Our, our increase in full-time employees because they have pretty big, big costs. And I think the, the extended wa- watch out on that is make sure that if we do go with the daycare center. We fully cost the daycare employees and fully cost the daycare center, including occupancy. Because I, I believe that in the past, the daycare program, although they did, it did pay for benefits for the employees. It didn't fully cover the cost of keeping that building open. And, you know, if it is in Greenwood Center, without an adult center there, uh, the only people occupying that building. And the reason that whole building is going to be heated is because of daycare. So there'd be a, a true cost to the, the town to keep that going. And I hope that whenever we take a look at it, we do fully cost it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh, any other questions for members of the select board? I see Stephen Morance.
Uh, yeah, a couple of thoughts, um. When I go back to my old finance committee days back in the day, there, there were two issues that come up that maybe can be addressed. One is Stores Library. I realize that we obviously have to make some sort of commitment to, uh. To meet the state's requirement, but Stores Library does have a trust fund, which they apparently guard, um, as though it's. Can never be broken into, and I'm not sure, uh, we, when, back in the day, we could never pry a nickel out of that, that trust fund to do anything for Stores Library. Not sure if that's changed, but that is money that is available and I would, I encourage the town to take a look at possibly using some of this money, which has not, um. Yeah, it's there. Uh, secondly, although I understand what Mark just said about, um, time employees. This is another thing going back to the little finance committee days. But if you take a look at the, uh, police department's overtime budget and fire department's overtime budget. And I understand this is the way they do it, but I believe, given those numbers that. And I, and I, I confess, I, I cannot say, I know exactly how it's all going around, but the numbers say you could probably hire somebody. Uh, and that would reduce your overtime budget to take, to take the place of what these people are doing overtime. And again, I would just take a look at that, um, because those are big numbers. And I do understand that you hire a full-time employee, it does, it does put out money over time. But, uh, those are big numbers, uh, the overtime budgets, and I'm not sure that perhaps. Uh, replace with employee would not make some kind of sense. Those are my thoughts on the budget. Otherwise, great job, uh, really good work, folks, and, uh, I, I appreciate all that you've done.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments? Okay, um, I would just like to say that, uh, you know, it's a great budget, uh, you put things together. When we look at, you know, the change from having custodians that are full-time employees in the town. I wonder if there's any stats on how many of those folks actually reach retirement? You know, how many people stay with us? Or is that a group of, of workers that may work for five to seven years and then move on? So that might be with them looking at, you know, if we're concerned about them, uh, really capitalizing on retirement. They have to have a certain number of years of employment. I don't know if there's any, you know, I don't know, Lynn, in, in terms of your work with, uh, you know, with other towns, uh, other cities. Do you know of custodians, is there a lot of turnover in those positions?
Um, in my experience, yes, there, there generally is.
There is, yeah, all right.
It could be hard positions to fill.
Yeah, because I guess that would be one of the things we, we look at. The, you know, hiring a person is saying, well, it's going to cost us in terms of OPEB. If there's a lot of turnover in those positions and very few people are going to actually be using OPEB money for retirement, right? Yeah, so that's worth looking.
Remember though, we pay, at least we pay pensions for our employee database, whether the, the year they're here, not just when they retire. So there's issues with that too, and I'm, I'm saying that as somebody who supported the full-time custodial workers in the, in the high school lunchroom. And I supported the full-time custodians in the adult center. So I'm not saying we don't need them. I think we do. And clearly they're a lot more effective and efficient when they're under our control as opposed to a, an outside vendor. I'm just saying they come with costs and we should just fully cost them.
Yeah, I don't know if the costs are just, are equivalent to the, the costs that you, uh, present. You know, that I don't know how many of those folks, I mean, you know, we put in towards the retirement, but if they never retire from a city or town, then, um. I, Paul, you might be able to answer this question. What happens to the money we contribute to OPEB for them? Or towards retirement?
It, it, it's actually, it's good to stay in the fund. It'll be distributed and used for everybody else if they don't draw on it.
Right, that's what I thought, so, okay, that was the only comment I even have to make. Uh, any other questions or comments? All right, so our next time going through this on Tuesday will be with the, um, department heads. So if there's specific questions for department heads, that's a good time to, uh, you know, bring them as you look over the budget. Again, I, I appreciate your, your, um. You know, you, Lynn, you did a great job with really focusing on everything. It was, I liked the presentation very much. Um, all right. So if there's no other questions, we can move on to the, uh, draft of the warrant for twenty twenty one at a town meeting. And I don't, I believe there's, there's one in the minutes and then there's one that we received in an email. And I guess I would ask Paul, the one in the email, uh, is that the most up-to-date one? Are they similar, are they both the same one?
I believe Deb had sent one in the email, um, that would, that would be the most up-to-date one. And then I had sent something with regard to, um, a couple of the bonding articles sixteen, seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. Um, but Deb, it, um, you, you had sent the revision like on Friday afternoon, if I recall.
Okay.
Yeah, I replaced the one that was attached to the agenda originally. And then an update was made. We attached the updated to the agenda. So it, it should be the current one. And then Paul, you sent out a something today.
Yeah, I had sent out something over the weekend with regard to a couple of the articles. And it's just rewording of the articles, the, you know, the intent of the articles are still there and everything. It's just the actual wording.
Okay, so, uh, as we look at this, do we want to, um. Should I, is there someone who wants to walk through this or I want to share my screen or?
I think we should walk, but I mean, this is our first, I'm not voting on anything, but just to get, get a look. Maybe we can ask questions that then Lynn and or Paul will, you'll either answer or get answers for.
Okay, so here we look at the, um, the warrant. Everyone can see my screen, correct? Yes, no, you're, okay, I see Paul shaking his head. So the warrant, which would be to choose three trustees, this is a pretty standard, and we have, uh. Names of three folks to, is that, those are accurate? This is all up to date? With Aaron being the third person? Oh, she was, that's, that's good, yeah, all right. Because I remember Ann was going to be involved with the housing and that was changed, but this is legit, so, okay. And then Article two, uh, again, transferring available funds. To cover last year's prior bills, pretty straightforward. Uh, we see this, number three, transfer the funds for the operating budget for legal expenses, we've talked about this, that are legal expenses in terms of the, you know, the ga- natural gas facility, uh, the challenges of, of trying to, prevent, prevent that from happening, and then the, uh, site remediation at the DPW, and so it's increased our legal costs, that's pretty straightforward. And then number four, transfer the sum of two hundred thousand, for words, budget of snow and ice removal, pretty standard, to see if we'll transfer funds, the sum of twenty thousand dollars or greater, for the budget of the human resources, the clerical runs, ten thousand for human resources, and.
If, if I could add, I think that number five will probably be deleted, um, those, those numbers are, are not needed as, as high as that, and at this point in time, because of attrition, we can probably handle internally.
Oh, beautiful, okay, that's good, but, um, Lynn, would you wanna comment on this, this was something you, you talked in your brother's presentation, that the, um, you know, you've taken some, uh, consolidated some folks and.
Yeah, this is actually one that was a, um, an item from the Fall Town Meeting, uh, but, we didn't, weren't able to hold the meeting as planned, so this is actually to cover costs, um, for cleanup, that, um, occurred back in August, um, so this would replenish the forestry operating budget.
Okay, alright, so this is Article Six you're talking about, um, for the treasury, and, um, for the removal, so we've talked about this, um, again, transfer funds, of a hundred and five thousand or greater lesser, for paying emergency work related to tropical storm, I'd say it's Isaac, Isaiah's, August fourth, um, Article Eight, two hundred and fifty thousand or greater or lesser for storm war- stormwater system condition assessment.
Um, can I just ask about Article Eight, if somebody can explain, that's something I've been seeing before?
So this, is this a study that was, um, did Mario ask for this?
Um, this, um, actually, I've been, I've been kind of giving you a heads up about this a little bit, um, off and on, uh, but I think that we may, this one, I'm not certain if it's going to stay in there or not, but what the idea is, um, is to fund a townwide stormwater assessment, um, we had submitted the last, not the last round, the round before, for MVP funding to fund this, um, and we were not successful, uh, in that grant application. The feedback we received is that they, MVP felt that, um, this is something the town should be doing anyway, and they weren't, looking favorably on this application, um, that being said, we, I do have some further information on it, and we will intend to submit an MVP, uh, grant for this, but in a slightly modified format, similar to another community that did have success in that area, um, so this, the goal would be, submit the MVP grant, uh, cover this study, um, and then we would not use this, um, warrant article for it, the, the problem is the timing of both are that, um, you know, they've run right alongside each other, so we won't know if we get the MVP grant until after, um, town meeting, um. Additionally, this is work that we, we really desperately need anyway, because it's, um, it will help enlighten some of the other work that we need to do, and, um, we can submit specific projects, or grants that are identified in the townwide assessment, um, so that, that's the goal, um, of why this article is in here, but I do fully intend to submit for a, for a, for a MVP grant for this.
Another follow-up question? Trad- traditionally, Lynn, if, if, you know, and because we have a stormwater utility system and a stormwater, uh, uh, fund.
Enterprise.
Stuff like this would be funded out of that, and, you know, if this were a water system or a sanitary sort, condition assessment, what we do is we bond it and pay for it out of the, the fund, rather than pay for it out of funds in the treasury, you know, I, I just, and that's what caught my eye, is looking at this, it ought to be part of the enterprise fund, paid for out of the enterprise fund, and, I'd encourage us to take a look at funding this through the enterprise fund, rather than through available funds in the treasury. And I say that recognizing we haven't fully funded the stormwater utility enterprise fund yet.
Tom, I have one question.
Yes, Richard.
Lynn, Lynn, do you happen to know when the last time we did this study?
Uh, to my knowledge, we've never done a townwide stormwater assessment.
Okay, I see, I saw, I thought, boy, Paul, what did we do before? We, we did, we did a major study.
Yeah, didn't fill an inf.
Or am I, or am I confused with, or am I confused just with the INI study?
I, I, I was just gonna say, I remember the INI studies, but I don't remember a stormwater type of study, um.
Because we, we've done a lot of work on, uh, cameras down drain pipes and.
We, we, we have, but there, there were, it wasn't a townwide, they were always been isolated, uh, in problem areas where we were about to fix drainages on certain streets, we, this, this is a, I think, a broader base, study to get the whole k- gabooodle looked at and a condition assessment at one time.
But are you, uh, asking, asking both the, the, the scope on, the scope of services on it? Do you happen to know how in-depth, are we talking about running a camera through every line, or what are we talking about?
Um, I don't think it's through every line, they've done quite a bit of camera work already, so they can certainly utilize the data that they have there. Um, it will look at our infrastructure as a whole, um, certainly the age of it, uh, try to determine where, things are draining to, and where we are, you know, we have certain issues, they'll take a look at that as well, um. We did have an estimate for this back in twenty eighteen, when we were getting ready to submit for the MVP grant that year. Um, uh, and that was about two hundred and, uh, I think it was forty thousand dollars, roughly. Um, I can give you that scope of services, though, I'm happy to share that with you.
Yeah, that, no, I would, you know, just generally concerned, because a lot of what is, a lot of what is shown here, would fall under routine inspections, et cetera, that crews could be doing on a recurring basis on zones, unless you're doing empty inside the pipes, cause looks like a lot of this is, uh, physical identification, cuts patients, culvert outlets, inlets. That's why I was wondering, what's the depth, why, why would it be under contract services instead of, uh, having some of our personnel start to break scissors apart?
Um, uh, certainly, there are pieces of that we can do, um, so for example, there's a project that's, um, been being discussed for Blueberry Hill. There's drainage issues at the school, um, this is something that DPW has been kind of getting in the queue to get ready to go, and then I know you all are aware that we did some master landscape planning work at Bliss and Laurel Parks. Well, Blueberry is pretty adjacent to Bliss Park, and any storm improve, storm drain improvements we do there, are going to have an impact on the park, but can't quite identify yet what exactly that is. And my concern is continuing to do these pathwork projects and not knowing the full scope of, what we may be impacting somewhere further down the line, um, and this is coming up, you know, this is just one example. There's three others that are in the queue right now, and so I have asked DPW to go back out and get a refreshed proposal, on doing a stormwater assessment, because I would like to look at this holistically, instead of piecemeal at all of these projects, um, because one thing we do one place will likely have an impact in another area of town, if we're not properly planning projects.
I could, I couldn't agree, uh, more with you, Lynn, I was just asking questions, but, it, the scope doesn't really define what's gonna take place, so that's, that's the reason I was asking questions.
You know, in terms of our, uh, wastewater, our stormwater system, you know, there's been new legislation reporting, how that's dealt with, and if, if we've been feeling any pressure from that, do they, are they asking us to put projects online? You know?
Sorry, can you clarify that, I don't, I'm not really following.
Well, when we started the, the stormwater, um, fund, you know, we, we did it because there was, the understanding of all the members of the board is that, that down the line, there's gonna be a lot of wastewater improvement projects, that were gonna be mandated because of legislation, and so I'm just wondering if the legislation is, are they asking the town to move forward on any projects?
Um, so the wastewater is separate from the stormwater, um, are you? Are you referring to the MS four permit, that was, you know, pretty widely discussed for several years, yeah. Um, so, certainly the catch basin cleaning is part of that, um, but that's separate from the stormwater assessment, um, but there certainly are, permits to meet that MS four permit, uh, and having a stormwater assessment will only help that.
Thank you, that's good, alright, um, any other questions on Article Eight? Okay, and then, you know, we're looking at these more, I'm sure, before we, uh, close the warrant. Article Nine is to transfer funds from the summary of a million dollars, to the, um, operations stabilization fund, and this is a pretty standard. Move, Article Ten, to you the town will rescind the, one million, three hundred thousand dollars of the two million dollar borrowing authorization for Phase Two, capping of the remaining portion of the Burney Road, uh, Tina Lane landfill, and, um, so, we, so we're rescinding most of that borrowing.
Yeah, the, 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 the project is, is done, it was overestimated, um, and basically, we only needed to borrow seven hundred thousand to complete the project, which is what we borrowed last May, I think, um, so there's no reason to have this remaining one point three million dollars on our books, so this is the way that, town meeting has to vote it to get it off our books.
Okay, people should be happy about that, that's good news, uh, Article Eleven, to see the, uh, vote revocation acceptance, um, Article Fourteen, establishing a solid waste recycling enterprise fund, and then we would change the way that, uh, that, those monies are gonna be sitting in, in our accounts, basically, right?
Correct, they would, they would no longer be accounted separately, they would be just, um, we would set them up as a, a, a different, um, department within the general fund DPW, just as they have a grounds department, a town buildings department, a highway department. Now they would, in essence, we would set this solid waste recycling department, but the funds would go for the general fund, as opposed to being accounted for separately as an enterprise fund, and that was based upon a number of years of management fi- management letter findings, um, regarding, um, basically the lack, the lack of, uh, their self-sufficiency, and the general fund picking up most of the cost there.
Okay, great, thank you, uh, Article Twelve, and this is, vote to fix the fiscal twenty-twenty year salary and compensation, uh, the moderator to a thousand dollars. Um, and is that what came up at the last town meeting?
That's what came up at the last town meeting, yes.
Okay, cause it was a lot less, and the select persons, uh, at our two thousand dollars, uh, forty-eight dollars a week, um, for our total budget here, uh, seventy-four, uh, one seventy-eight. Any questions on these numbers for the board?
Yeah, those numbers would.
Yeah, okay, yeah, let's go to the board, um, and then we move into Article Thirteen, which is raise appropriate a hundred thousand dollars, establishing a wage settlement account, to cover the, uh, fire collective bargaining agreement, non-school, uh, non-union wage adjustments, and, um, so we've talked about that in the past. Article Fourteen, uh, vote to raise the appropriate transfer of available funds, these amounts for, uh, project developments, project reserve, fire truck replacement, kitchen upgrades, radio replacement. Uh, and we talked about this, including the data backup and recovery systems. So we had, uh, this.
Um, parentheses, it says Lynn with different numbers, is.
Yeah, I, I, I can explain that, the, um, what the numbers that I presented in the normal, um, in the normal position are the numbers from the capital planning committee, and there were some subtle differences between what the capital planning committee had recommended, and what Lynn had originally recommended. So I just, I wanted you to be able to see both.
Still be the same, Paul?
And, uh, there are, there are some subtle differences, um, you know, if you, if you went through, I, I don't have the exact amount, but I, I do believe there are some subtle differences, not necessarily, um, with the amount of raise and appropriate, but the amount that we'd have to take from available funds. The, um, the capital planning committee recommended a little bit, I believe, a little bit higher amount than what Lynn had recommended.
Right. Uh, uh, a question. In terms of Lynn versus the, the, the numbers that we see, I'll go to, uh, uh, Richard's point about sidewalk construction, where capital planning said they wanted two twenty-five, Lynn now recommends the original, four twenty-five, what's in the, what's, what is gonna be presented to town meeting, the two twenty-five or the four twenty-five, we don't know yet.
That's up to, that's up to the board to decide by March fifteenth.
And so, there's things that say, the numbers that say Lynn, those are your recommendation, yeah?
Yeah, so originally, back in the fall, or, yeah, it was fall, I think, I submitted a capital plan to the capital planning committee. What Paul is identifying in the warrant here are, are the differences, so what I submitted to capital planning are in parentheses, if, in the areas that are different, and what is, looks like the traditional warrant article is what capital planning has recommended.
And we can substitute any numbers we want in, into those numbers.
You, you, you can amend as you see fit.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so we'll move on, um, and, so.
Article Fifteen is somewhat of a duplication when it comes to the kitchen, um, that is also recommended in the previous article. Yeah, but the, um, the fire truck reserve, there would have been an FY twenty-one allotment and an FY twenty-two allotment. Um, I don't know if you wanna double up in the prior article and get rid of this one, or how you wanna handle it, but, it's basically a carryover from the, what would have been on the Fall Town Meeting warrant.
Okay, alright, so we'll, we'll figure that as we move along. Article Sixteen, uh, raise a code bit, uh, three hundred forty-five thousand dollars, for replacing the air handlers at Long Meadow High School. And are these air handlers, does that have to do with like COVID, uh, keeping the air moving in the school, is that?
Yes, I believe it has to do with air circulation throughout the high school.
Yeah, alright, and the, you know, it's a new school, but, uh, because of COVID, we've had to change our expectations about.
These were the air handlers in the old business development that weren't changed, these are actually thirty, twenty-five-year-old air handlers.
Oh, well, that's good.
But they were, they were, they were rebuilt, though, Mark. They left the frames, and they, they, they complained about that ever since the high school was completed. If I'm not mistaken, if we go back on our records, I'd be there with new motors and everything else, and, but, Tom, I don't think this has. Yeah, Tom, I don't think this has anything to do with COVID requirements, this is, this is something that was left over from the original construction on the high school.
Oh, okay, alright, so that's a request, and then, Article Seventeen, uh, you know, seven hundred seventy-seven, hundred thousand, um, replacing water mains on Farmington Avenue. It was pretty straightforward.
I, I have one question on that one, Lynn, do you know, does that take care of, uh, any of our inadequately sized lines at this point?
This, for the Farmington Avenue project?
Right.
Water main.
Um, I don't know the specifics of exactly what the mains. Um, I don't know the specifics of exactly what the main size is they're doing, but that's pretty, that would be pretty standard that they would upgrade to what it's needed, but I can get this
Well, no, 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 I understand that they're going to upgrade what's needed. I just want to know, is this replacing any of those terribly undersized lines?
I don't have the exact specifics on the project to be able to tell you, you know, concretely here. I can get it though.
Now, is this something we could discuss on Tuesday when we talk about the budget? Lynn?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. So Rick, that'd be a great time to, to bring that question up. You may want to make a note.
Yeah, I'm making an up right now, Tom.
That's right. Okay. Article eighteen. And this is, uh, to look at, uh, replace two sewer lines on John Quay Lane. Uh, you may have similar questions about those. Oh, no, these are sewer lines. I'm sorry.
The issue is John Quay Lane is, it doesn't seem to be the twenty worst streets in town. In fact, that
Yeah.
lapses tells me that the contractor didn't do a very good job when he put them in.
Yeah, you're right, Mark. That, that's a puzzler.
That, 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 that street can't be more than twenty-five years.
Right. I agree. Um, so, yeah, we should find out what, you know, what exactly happened. I suppose there's no, um, guarantees or, or kind of how many years, you know, it's supposed to last a hundred years or, uh, you know, nothing like that. So. But three hundred thousand dollars is just, nothing to sneeze at.
Well, Tom, the majority of our system in town is seventy-five plus years old.
Yeah, I, I would think so.
And, and, and you know, you know, like Mark said, these, these lines, what, ten, fifteen years old? So there, there is a question mark whether, what's going on? That's a well, as long as somebody comes to answer some questions.
Okay. That's good. Um, and then Article nineteen, uh, uh, making drainage improvements on Shady Knoll. And, um, no, that street's been there a while. That's so probably, not much to ask about that. Uh, Article twenty, and this is for highway improvements. Um,
And the, the, the first one is just a, a minor, there was a minor, um, addition error last year for the FY twenty-one allotment that they, we still need to appropriate six hundred and seventy-four thousand. The next one is actually the FY twenty-two allotment of our regular four hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Okay. And those are payments. So the state did some improvements and we need to pay them.
State will reimburse us to do the, the improvements.
Okay, right. Okay, that sounds right. Okay. So hopefully everyone understands what that's for. Um, and then the transfer funds of a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, to start preliminary design work, uh, for Route five. And this has gone, and this will be the third time this goes on the, the warrant. Um, so this is not a new thing.
Yeah, you, you, you're right, Tom. You're right, Tom. It's not a new thing.
Yeah.
But this is absolutely ridiculous. Putting this thing back in front of the town when we've got people standing up that don't have a slight idea what they're talking about and trashing this program. Instead of a very important design project that we now have lost up to two to three years on. I had re- recently talked to our town manager, you know, we receive federal highway or dollars coming in to our budget. I don't know why we're taking this back to town meeting. I don't know why we don't take it out of our funds that are coming in uh, for that program and, and, and if need be, replace this with a, with a request to do a section of asphalt in town for a hundred thousand dollars. Then let the people in town turn down a road improvement project that may run on their street. There's opposition for some reason for dense planning in this town and we, we've got to put a stop to it. We've got to find a way to do a workaround.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Now, I know that the last town meeting this came up, uh, people said, well, because of COVID, you know, why should we be spending this kind of money on the roads, planning, um, hopefully that excuse will come up again.
Well, it's, it's for the simple purpose that we'll get ten to twelve million dollars when we do this. I mean, this, this is how insane this is. It has nothing to do with COVID. It's preliminary, it's preliminary planning that this town must complete if they're going to be competitive and get the money from the state. And, and that's what I say. This is too important to allow a debate to break loose on the town floor by people that most likely don't have any idea what they're talking about. They're just emotionally involved. Uh, you know, that's one of the flaws that we see with our town meetings is this. And, and this project's now been delayed for two years. And, and Lynn, I think you said this project now is estimated at twelve million?
Uh, this is the one that will end up phasing. So the entire project, I think itself is sixteen million.
Yeah. So it's, Tom, it's, it's astronomically climbing every year. This thing, this thing when it first started was back in the range of eight to nine million. And now we've lost three years on it. And this is more important than we're given a credit for, guys.
Yeah.
Well, I think, one thing, I think if you stood up at town meeting and said exactly what you're saying now, let's spend four hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars to get twelve to sixteen million dollars from the state. Um, I think that would, would sway the day. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's obviously, the argument is completely, you know, it's plain on, it's plain to me. And I think the way you stated it would be plain to town, uh, town meeting and, um, if, you know, your impassioned here would be really, would go a long way at town meeting, I believe. So I, I'm making that recommendation to you to make this plea to town meeting because it's absolutely absurd to say we can't spend four hundred thousand dollars, get sixteen million buck back, sixteen million dollars back in return. I mean, that's, uh, and I think if you made that point, it would prevail.
Yeah. And I'm also hoping that due to COVID, we've had more walkers um, on Route five than probably we've had in the last five years put together. And they obviously are figuring out that there are sidewalks that go all the way along Route five on both sides of the street. And maybe they'll say, oh yeah, maybe we should do some planning to, to get this street with big lanes and sidewalks. So hopefully we'll, we'll be, um, successful this year. Now, Article twenty-three is to look at, um, the Department of Finance Administration in a town charter. And these are, uh, basically aligning the charter with the current practice of the Department of Finance Administration. And so this is a, just an update on the charter. Um, we probably have a number of these. Well, actually this is, uh, transfer money from community, community preservation to appropriate Wolf Swamp thing, real, real, uh, the Ring Road and, um, improvements to the verification. And this is still, um, is the correct numbers that we're going to do this. For, cause I thought at one point the Ring Road was not going to happen, but
Right. This is to repurpose that money.
Right. Oh, repurpose the money. Okay. All right. Great. And then the, uh, transfer community preservation funds, um, historic preservation. So this is a standard transfer for funds for the community preservation. Right, Paul's?
Yes.
Right. Has it been voted by the committee? Community preservation committee.
Okay.
This fiscal year.
All right. And then, uh, this is again raise appropriate for the community preservation, uh, local surcharge trust fund for administrative costs. And then here's the community preservation for replacement of Wolf Swamp Field Playground, is a recommendation. And then devote, uh, for carpeting the store's library, children's room. Twenty-nine is upgrade irrigation for the community gardens. And then we have a, we're not sure about this article. I'm going to check with the planning board. Okay. So let's look at Article thirty. Temporary prior easements allowing construction and improved pedestrian bicycle, bicycle facilities leading to and from Uberie Hill Elementary. And we have funding approved by Mass DOT for this?
Yes, this is part of the Safe Roots to Schools program.
Is there going to be a map available so people can see what the changes are when they vote?
Like, we can get one there, yes.
Yes. Okay. So this is just easements, but not any money. So that's, should be easy for folks. Um, and then easements along the North Interceptor. And this is the sewer interceptor project. So more easements needed to be done to bring our, uh, interceptor up to date. The, um, there's Article two, chapter seven hundred wetlands. And as enforcement, people violate the bylaw. And, um, so this would be revised in our town. So is this a town charter or no?
The wetland bylaw.
Okay. So it's just a bylaw that we would be approving. I'm sorry. That says right there, by law. Um, and then this is to look at short-term rentals like VRVO, Airbnb, if the town would get, uh, excise tax. We talked about that. And the other
Tom, can I just ask a question? Um, uh, I have Walter Gunn in the attendee list asking if he, if you would let him in to talk to, about the zoning articles that are coming up. Do you see any reason not to do that?
Or No, I think it'd be helpful. Sure. Yeah, Walter, please, uh,
Okay. We're almost to the zoning ones. That's why I'm asking.
Okay, good. And then this is another bylaw. It has to do with, um, the, the filing petitions for the warrant. Um, insertion last day of filing petitions and, um, pretty standard, just, we're just making adjustments on those. And then here's the bylaw for historic district commission. Uh, basically just making some changes that we've all, uh, discussed as, uh, select board and who's members and so forth. So this long article, just updating that. And then we also look at, well, oh, this is more of the changes to the historic district commission. And then the bylaw for the tree committee, we've done work, um, we've made some adjustments there. And, uh, we just replaced the membership. And then, um, zoning bylaws.
Um, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Maybe in the past, we've had trouble getting people on there. Would it be more helpful if we said up to instead of nine members? And that way, if we don't, if we only had seven members in the future or five, we don't feel that we're killing ourselves to get those extra two people. It's something to consider, Lynn. You know, where it says town should have a tree committee that consists of up to or seven to nine or whatever it is because although we have nine people interested now, we never have in the past. And I'd hate to put that into our, into our bylaws and pressure us to do, to, to look short. Cause it affects forums and other things.
Well, you know, we, we discussed this and voted on it in the past. Um, you know, we'd have to bring it back to a, a select board vote.
Well, the whole, the whole warrant's going to come before select, article by article. We're going to come before the select board, huh?
Yeah. So we would have to discuss, I don't remember why we, um, made the adjustment. You know, it consists from seven members to nine members. I believe it was requi- it was requested. We talked about it quite a bit. Um, before we make any changes to something like that, I think we need to look at the minutes, Lynn.
This was, Tom, this came, um, from the tree committee. Uh, they discussed this and um, one member wrote this warrant article and is asking to expand the size of the tree committee from seven to nine members.
Yeah, it never came before the select board, Tom.
Oh, I see. Okay. So this is just general bylaw that they put together.
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying, if you change the bylaws to nine, then it, it has a lot of impact on it. We, if they want to have up to nine people, I'm okay with that, but we shouldn't force that on the, into the bylaws. That is just a comment, Tom, um, about how we write the article. That's all.
Okay. All right. So we can revisit that as we go through. Um, and then this is to look at, um, the zoning and Walter, did you want to, uh, speak to this zoning bylaw change for renting our bedroom space, the VRVO kind of guests?
Yes. Hi, Tom. Thank you. Good evening. Uh, no, I just, I'm only on this meeting because I just want to remind the, the board that, uh, we have, uh, state statutes we have to follow. And we're having a public hearing, um, set for April sixth. Now, we haven't approved that yet because our planning board meeting is on Wednesday. Uh, we're already looking at the, the zoning change, um, for the, uh, Christian Science Church. We have the solar bylaw from, uh, Mr. Freedman from last year. It's carrying forward and forward and forward. This is the first I've seen of Article thirty-seven. So I, I talked to Lynn earlier today and, um, some of this stuff was, this is sort of like a new, um, revised warrant. And we just have to get on the same playing field here and, and the same page because three, on March fifteenth, your deadline is to close the warrant. And we're going to, we need to, uh, I need by Wednesday to know this is certain. This is what you guys want as a select board. This, um, something we need to now schedule for a public hearing. We have to post it in the newspaper. You know, we need, you know, at least a month to, to, to publicize it and to get out notices on it. So, um, I just, the only reason I'm chiming in here is make sure everybody on the select board is okay with this. I mean, Lynn is okay with it. So just
Okay.
Has anybody seen this before? It's just one of my
Oh, yeah. This has been something we've discussed. I think it's a carryover from the last town meeting.
No, I think we pulled it, uh, because I think, remember we were, we were trying to, uh, reduce the meeting down because it was, because of the strain, because of the situation we were in. I think a lot of things were pulled for future meetings. So, um, everybody's okay with this, um, for us to have a, a hearing on?
Yeah, I believe you voted it in, right?
I don't recall voting for this.
No?
I mean, I oppose it, but I just don't recall voting it in.
Oh.
This is a carryover, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, it was withdrawn. I think it was withdrawn.
Yeah, this was a, this was one that had been just floated last year, a year ago, if not more. Um, and then we pared down the warrant. So this got pulled off of there. We continue to get complaints about this practice. I asked Paul Healy to draft the language to, um, put this warrant article together, which he did. And that's what you have here in front of you tonight.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So
This is purely being done to, by, um, in response to complaints that we're getting about this practice occurring in neighborhoods.
Okay. But normally the, we would have to receive this, the planning board would receive this from the select board. And this is the first I've seen of it tonight. And literally, um, we, we got to talk about this on Wednesday so that we can have it published for a hearing in April. So we can make, I guess, the May sixteenth or whatever date you're still planning for the, uh, you know, town meeting. We can, uh, have a recommendation for town meeting on this. So, um, I guess I'll just paste and cut this. So I'm the clerk, so I will take this out and submit it to the planning board on, uh, Wednesday.
Yes.
Some of this may just be my not understanding the process. Um, so if a warrant article is prepared and submitted for the draft warrant, it then doesn't go to planning after the select board?
We don't have time, um, because of the, uh, the timeframes. If we got this, so on March fifteenth, you guys, you guys closed the, the warrant. And we have to act on it. So with advertising and publishing, you would make the, our May, we'd have to have a special, uh, planning board hearing for this. So typically it'd be nice to have these, um, before you close the warrant and that we just have them. I mean, we don't care. We, if anything's handed over from the select board, we'll certainly vet it and, and put it through to town meeting. But we should probably have it a little sooner than before the closing date of a, of a, of a warrant. Maybe a month or so earlier.
Yes.
Yes, the, the process was that a committee Yes, the, the process was that committees or individuals had to either go through town manager or uh generally the select board to get things put on the warrant, but or the historical commission or the treaty commission generally doesn't get to put things on the warrant, because they want them on the warrant.
Right, that's the way the state law works, correct?
You know, so you think that, that most of these things would, would have gone through the select board and it'd be approved to, to move forward on the, on the warrant?
Right, I mean, you have that right, uh, I mean, of course, the planning board can initiate something, the zoning board of appeals can initiate something that can go right straight to you, so you could get a, a letter tomorrow from the zoning board of appeals with a a, a recommendation to change a zoning bylaw, so they have that privilege under, under the state statute. Um, I just wanna make sure, because the, the timing here is, we're so tight on, on, on timing that um, I wanna make sure this gets to the planning board and gets, that we publish it and have it for a hearing in, in April, so.
Okay.
Unless you oppose it, you could withdraw, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's fine.
My, I, I was on, I was, it's probably my misunderstanding, I thought that's what this was tonight. Is you going through the draft warrant, looking at these warrant articles, having a conversation, deciding whether or not they should be on the warrant, or if they didn't need that, so it sounds like what you, what should be happening then is when this complaint comes in and Paul Healy and I look to how to respond to this complaint, and we say, okay, well, we need to eliminate this um warrant, or I'm sorry, this, this provision in the bylaw. At that point, I should be coming to the select board and saying, this is something we'd like to put on a future warrant? And then, you know, that could have happened back in November or January?
That, that's, that's the, the ideal process, Lynn, but given where we are now. Because I'm only one of five opinions, but mine would be, go ahead, Walter, with a, with a hearing and let's move forward with this thing, and if next week when we vote on the articles one by one, this doesn't make it, you cancel your hearing.
Okay, yeah. And the um, interesting, okay, right, and, and I, I know that we've discussed this before as a group. Because there would be some tax benefits to the town and, and uh so forth, so. Um, alright, so let's see how things progress, uh and then we have another zoning bylaw. And this is uh administrative and enforcement of the uh planning fields, um for violations. Any comments on this?
Yeah, uh, um, we've already, uh, the planning board already voted to recommend this to town meeting.
Okay, alright, good, so this, these fines are set. And then uh the definition of a commercial vehicle. Um, did the zoning committee look at this?
Well, the planning board, um, just my question was, we actually had a hearing on this in January. But we voted on something regarding the weight of vehicles that I think, and now it says, uh, talks about just lettering, so I don't know where the change happened here, but we would have to have another hearing on Article thirty-nine, is, is not exactly what we as a planning board had a hearing on in, in January, so.
In fact, Lynn, didn't you send us a revised definition today?
I did, yes, that's what's in this draft warrant here.
Oh, so this is gathered, okay.
And um, this was based on that, that January hearing, um where the conversation brought up the point of just mimic the um explanation of a commercial vehicle that's in the bylaw and use that as the definition, so. I'm fine with going back to what was done in January, um or whatever the process is that the board would like to see, um. I had raised the question, uh, and it seems like we've gone, it seems like we have, we could go either way, but I had raised the question to town council. Um, after the January uh public hearing for the planning board, and then just recently, this past week. Um, about whether those public hearings would need to be redone, because the, those warrant articles technically didn't exist. Um, and it sounds like we could do it either way, so. I, I don't have a feeling strongly one way or the other on whether we should keep that definition that was done in January, or use this one that um has been amended.
So, so Mark, uh, since you were in, in on the original amendment to the original commercial vehicle definition, so the, the one we voted on was about a gross vehicle weight rating of twelve thousand pounds or more is a van, truck, or SUV of any weight that has decals or painted lettering that represents a commercial enterprise. So now we've reduced it to something, um, which tonight was presented as a little more simple, it just says, commercial vehicle which is a van or pickup truck used in connection with a business or trade which has com, uh, commercial lettering thereon. Um, that's more generalized, more, less specific, takes out the weight limits. Um, I just was curious, I mean, I yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Technically, the original one was to not include things like the, the small station wagons or whatever. Because they weren't, you know, the, the larger vehicles, the new one now includes those. That's, I, I, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a, a vehicle expert, so I can't tell you, but I know that that was the intent of putting that vehicle weight, Walter, was, you know, people's, you know, and
I know.
You know, we even have one in town, the Mary Kay Cosmetics, you know, you know, station wagon wouldn't necessarily admit the, the prior definition, but appears to meet the new definition.
I know, I'm, I'm sorry, you guys have a, a big agenda tonight, and um it's becoming sort of like we have this zoning hearing, but it is initiated from your department's Lynn, and it's your department and it's you folks as a select board. I just don't know what you're comfortable with, uh, we're happy, we, we endorsed, we voted for and endorsed the um, the, the commercial vehicle definition that had the weight and talk about the painted lettering, so it wasn't unanimous, though, there were two members of our um, uh, planning board that voted against that, at, at that hearing. Um, this other definition now is more simplified. Uh, so we've already recommended what was previously from uh the warrants of the annual town meeting, the special fall town meeting, that I've never acted on, so. I don't know, Lynn, who?
I'm fine with inserting that one in place of it, and going with what the planning board voted on, um.
I mean, do you have a reason why, maybe, you know?
My reason why was the, based on the conversation at that meeting in January, uh, it did not seem like there was much support, and it was not being responsive to the concerns that the residents at that meeting expressed. Um, that it was not so much the size of the vehicle, more about the commercial lettering on that vehicle.
And that's true, Lynn, Lynn was present at that hearing, and there were um residents that did um communicate their concerns of the existing bylaw, or the way the bylaw was gonna be presented at community, so.
I mean, the question I, I would ask is, is the current wording more restrictive or less restrictive? Frankly, I don't know enough about it to know which way, but it just sounds to me like it potentially is more restrictive because it
Yeah.
Sounds those, the lower weight vehicles.
The, the current wording is exactly from um Article two, general use regulations, um, one point two B, if I'm getting that reference right. It's the language in there about enclosed garages, all I did was cut that sentence and turned it into a definition.
Right, and, and I'm not trying to argue whether it's right or wrong, Lynn, I'm just, you know, looking at what the you know, not what the definition is within that section you cited, but rather what it is we really wanna address with people parking in their garage, their drivers, that, you know, like I said, you, you know, my, my frankly, my concern is that the more inclusive we make this, the less likely it is to pass. Because we're gonna rule out the, the small station wagons and small cars that may have lettering on them, as opposed to, you know, those says vans, pickup trucks, so maybe that'll work, I don't know.
Well, one of the things, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, one of the things that, when you, when I read this, it says, you know, so I have a pickup truck. Now, do I use it in connection with a business? Well, I drive it to my office, you know, I don't know if it's that's. But technically, I guess it would say that that would be, um, if you use it, it with a business or trade then it would be a commercial vehicle. And it says, in addition, or if they have commercial lettering, they're on. So, so this is really saying, anyone who has a pickup truck, uh, basically is not gonna be able to have that out in the open. Because if they use it in conjunction with a business. And how do we know if they use it in conjunction with business? I mean, I guess you'd have to follow them and see where they drive every day, but uh I don't know, I think this, to me, this is too general, this is, this can restrict too many people who may drive I mean, could basically, you know, you could say, yeah, you have a pickup truck, I see you drive it to your job, you're uh no matter, regardless of what the job is, you can't say, well, I wanna discriminate against people who work in certain fields. You know, you can't say, well, I, you know, Tom, you're a professional, so we're not gonna discriminate you and your pickup truck. But if I'm a construction worker, then they would say, yes, you know, we're gonna discriminate, and, and that so the wording on this does not meet my expectations of, of uh being accurate. Um, if you wanna have vehicles that have commercial lettering, uh, you have to be more specific. This, this wording doesn't really help me.
You know what, um, I would recommend, um, I always believe in zoning bylaw changes, it's sort of like getting your foot in the door, uh, that maybe we go back to the more um restrictive more defined a definition that Mark had worked on, that went back to last, uh, last summer. And you can tweak it over time and make adjustments, I, I think, um as you well know, I mean, I always loved Jerry Nollet's expression was, you wanna bring them out to town meeting, you have a zoning change or you have a, a leash law, bylaw, and, and that's the same thing here, uh, the more Lynn, the more general it gets, the more it's gonna just um come hard to get this thing past the town meeting of any, any, any form out of it, so that's just my thought.
Any other comments from select board members? Um, as you look at this definition? Alright, well, I guess when we review this, Lynn, eh, we can have uh the other definition, and we'll just try to figure out which one we feel more comfortable with.
Yeah, I have to, we have to publish this, though, um, Tom.
Yeah, well, we're not gonna be publishing tonight, are we?
No, but I mean, we meet on Wednesday, and I literally have to advertise this thing unless, unless we roll it over to May, I mean, I suppose we could have a May, May meeting on this.
Walter, do you have to go out for a hearing on, no matter what the wording is, or on just this wording, the other one's still good? I think the January hearing will last till May, will it?
Yes, you know, you have six months, we're up to July.
My, my feeling is that if the planning board has already uh accepted something at this stage of the game, and it's a change I think we should stick with what the planning board has done to date. And as Walter said, you know, we can move along in time, and, you know, this is, this is not forever.
Right.
Okay, any other comments along that line?
Yes, that sounds good.
I can, alright, so. Alright, so then, um, I, I mean, we could take a vote on it, do we wanna go back to the original um, this definition that was approved by the board already? Do we have a motion to that? So then Walter would know that what, that's we're gonna go with?
And I'll make the motion, we go back to the definition of a commercial vehicle that appeared in the, the not held false special town meeting of November twenty twenty.
Okay, and a second on that?
I, I'll say that, I, that is the one that you guys have already approved, Walter, that um
Yes, the one I, I read to you over the
Of touch, okay, um, does anyone need to hear the thing have read again, or remember it?
Yeah, I can read it too, if you want.
Yeah, I got it in front of you, go ahead.
Okay, Walter, go ahead and read it.
Okay, so what we, what we voted to recommend was quotation marks, quote, uh, commercial vehicle. Any vehicle registered for commercial use which has a gross vehicle weight rating of twelve thousand or more pounds or is a van, truck, or SUV of any weight that has decals or painted lettering that represents a commercial enterprise.
Okay. Um, so we'll, any further discussion? Okay, so let's take a roll call vote, Deb, on this approving, uh, that we would go to that definition.
Um?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Great, thank you, uh, and let's move on to another zoning bylaw. And this is about the um, uh, you know, if a garage, you know, needs to be replaced. Uh, any questions on this? I think we've gone over this a couple times.
Yeah, and just to let you know, uh, Tom, the planning board did recommend this Article forty-one at our January uh sixth meeting.
Okay, and then we go to, oh, that was forty, oh, there's forty and forty-one. I guess I'm confused here. So this one is, we have a forty and a forty-one that look too similar, what's the only differences?
Forty, forty is to replace, um, that's an interesting one, that's one, um, that's a good uh revenue maker, that's if a non-conforming house burnt down um completely, uh, there's several of those in town, they're not um at this point allowable to be rebuilt. So this bylaw allows the um, the ability for a homeowner, a lot owner to rebuild um, on that lot, so that's Article forty.
So the same footprint, okay.
Yeah, so we've voted, yes, so the planning board did recommend that one at our uh January sixth meeting, and then the difference in forty-one is just um something about uh just the size and of a garage and um accommodating vehicles, I believe, had something to do with um, hatched garage, I guess something in our bylaws lacking, so it's sort of, um, I thought it was a no-brainer here. Uh, also, we uh recommended Article forty-one uh at the January sixth meeting as well as presented here.
Okay, so this will help people who need to store those vehicles that have commercial lettering.
And that would be
Yeah?
Okay.
And then this is um looking at the business district. So this is different, I, this doesn't look familiar.
I, I think you talked to Donna about that earlier tonight.
Okay, this is for the land of the first Christian, this is a, a draft of an article to make the zone change. There was a request that was um given to us, and this will be, you'll be hearing this on April sixth, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Tom?
Yes.
We haven't voted to put this on the warrant.
Correct, we have done. And, and I, my understanding is that we'll be getting additional information from the petitioners um, to convince us that they are developers that the town wants to work with, it's like what it approves, so hopefully we'll get something from them.
Well, you can't, you, you can't, um, by right, you can't vote to withdraw um Article forty-two. Unfortunately, the state statute, I think, uh, Mr. Strange would remind you of that, too, that I think under the, the state statute, uh, a property owner has the right to request a zone change. Um, and as you know, the procedure, the, the select, he presents it to the select board, select board gives it to the planning board within fourteen days, we have a public hearing, it's the, it's our legislative body, it's the town, town meeting that decides whether this uh party is uh gonna have this zone change or not.
But Walter, the town, who gets to put this on the, on the warrant, I mean?
We have no choice, it's a, it's
Guys like this has had a special town meeting.
You could do that, um, and as you well know, we've had two prior situations, we had the Lomond Shops, and we had the uh Burry Young Mansion that they opted to, to do that, so they, they, they went out and got actual signatures from voters to call a special town meeting, and in their case, they were so passionate about their projects, they had come to the planning board initially with just a, a, a preliminary plan, then we discussed what they should do, they went out and actually got the signatures, they went out, they hired the uh designers to do site and design review, and in some cases, they hired people to do traffic studies. So, but that's because they wanted to, they, they wanted an ironclad approval of this process at, at town meeting. Now, in this case, this gentleman, uh, this, this firm, Coal Vest, is, is exercising their right under the state law. They are, have a right to uh, propose a zoning change as, as any resident could in Long Meadow. I mean, typ- typically, any resident can say they want to change their, their zoning from residence to business. But as you can see, um, it's a hard sell. But I think as a select board, you have no choice other than to pass this on to the uh, town meeting for, for their um, endorsement.
I don't, I don't, but we don't have to do it in the main town, in the annual town meeting, Walter.
Right, I think you do. I think you have to act on it within a certain period of time. Uh, Mark, is that correct? Mark, Mark would know this.
Yeah.
Strange, Mark, Strange?
Yeah, all, all that sounds right, Walter. I'm not quite sure how it works in a, in a, a town meeting. Situ- situation, obviously I'm familiar with it from a city.
How about a city? Now, what, what does city do? I mean, you, what would your city council do, the mayor?
We would have, so, so they, they would file a zone change request. It would get with this, with the city council, it'd get bounced to the planning board for a public hearing. And then it would go to the city council for a final recommendation.
Right, it's the same, so the city council just substitute town meeting.
Correct.
And, and so with this, the issue is that we'd be closing the warrant. Um, you know, prior to April sixth, most likely.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. We have to have a public hearing, um, as long as it's.
Well, we, you know, so we, if it doesn't make the warrant, if we decide the warrant's too big, then we'll have to have a special town meeting. It will go before town residents have voted.
Okay.
So we'll see. We, we had a lot of articles we weren't able to put in and I, I think part of it is because of COVID, you know, things are a little bit different than usual. But this is uh, you know, we will see if we can work with them and if they'll work with us and uh.
And that would be the way to go, yes, I agree.
It would be the easiest thing, yeah. And then we move on to citizen position petitions and so that really isn't anything we need to discuss here. But I do know that, that this petition is gonna go before you on April sixth also.
That'd be correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, so.
I, I'm gonna chime out of here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but thank you for hearing me out and um, thanks again.
Oh, no, thank you for helping out. Okay, so good evening, Walter, and uh, now we look at our agenda and um. Let me just get back to that. And uh, we had a, a, a letter recently, a document that was an audit of the Hampton County Regional Retirement System. And so we just wanted to discuss this audit report. It was from January first twenty fourteen till December thirty-first two thousand seventeen. So it covered um, you know, a three-year period. And so I know, Mark Gold, you wanted to make some comments on this?
Oh, I don't.
Oh, you don't?
I know.
No, I, I, there was a board meeting in the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board last week. I, I sat, Paul Pesterzak called in, I called in, I think two or three other people from Long Meadow called in. We basically listened to it. It was a more or less a regular board meeting. There's a, a special board meeting been called for this week and I think Lynn will be there and Paul will be there and I may call in also. For, for them to specifically address this, this audit. I, you know, I don't. I guess the, the less I say, the better in this case. I, it was, it was much, you know, well-reported in the newspapers and what's been going on here in the, the audit. You know, the only issue I'm concerned about is the audit was through two thousand seventeen and so. It, because it found some unusual instances of, of occurrences there. You know, the first question people were asking is what's going on since two thousand seventeen? And so part of that will be looked at, but I think the, from my perspective, the, the concerns are in good hands. With the, the, the towns who are now members of the, of, of the audit, uh, of the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. I would also just comment quickly that, that this audit got mailed to all the towns. You know, and, and, well, all the, not just towns, but all the participants. Because there are, you know, regional school districts, there are all kinds of people who participate in Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. And I give Lynn a lot of credit. She read it. Towns probably took it and just filed it away without reading it. But when you read it, and for those of you people who haven't read it, it certainly is worth reading. And if anybody's interested in the town, send me an email and I'll send them a copy of it, because I've got a, a, a hard copy of it or a electronic copy of it. It's interesting and it makes worthwhile reading and it does tell us that some actions and some oversight needs to be taken. You know, we have a massive investment in the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. We need, need to make sure that those funds are, are managed appropriately.
Okay, thank you. And, and actually, I believe that it's part of our agenda. It's on the agenda. So if people went to our um, agenda for this meeting, they would concede the audit report. So uh, you wouldn't have to bother Mark. But um, yeah, it was quite a read. I don't know, any other board members wish to comment on it? Okay, I, I know that uh, Mark, you know, you would, Mark Gold, and commented on how things seemed to be going over there several years ago. And uh, I will admit that it did help me make the decision to submit my retirement papers. Because I, I got a little nervous though, if that thing was gonna crash, uh, this report doesn't look good, uh, that's for sure. Um, so uh, my only question, Tom, my only question would be. Uh, it's, it's pretty bad here, Mark Gold, is this report is two thousand fourteen to seventeen, it's coming out in two thousand twenty-one. What am I missing here? Why? Something is some, I mean, as bad as the report is, it smells a lot worse by having it be sat on for four years.
Steve, Steve, just to understand, it wasn't sat on, my understanding is, it wasn't so much as being sat on by the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. Although they did get this sometime before it was released. But the, the audit was done by Pyrrhic, which is the pension fund of, you know, Massachusetts. And they do them potentially, or not potentially, they do them in arrears as well as, as up to date. And so we've been told that they're working on the more recent audits. But you're right, I mean, that, that was my first comment. If this is what was going on in two thousand seventeen, what's happened in the ensuing three years? And, and clearly, you know, there are other people beside the town of Long Meadow who are now interested. And I think Lynn might comment, but I know that Bob Markle, who's the town manager of Hampton and, and folks in East Long Meadow and a couple other communities are. You know, are quite concerned about, about this, as they should be. And my sense is that, that, you know, questions are going, are, have been asked, will continue to be asked. And, you know, if they're not being answered appropriately, they'll uh, continue to ask questions until they are. I don't know, Lynn, are you s- see on, see this, but maybe you want to chime in?
Yeah, so regionally, um, the town managers have been meeting uh, to discuss it. And figure out the approach that we're going to take, because we have a lot of concerns. Um, that, just the three years that was covered are concerning, but we also share the same concerns that you just identified. Eighteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty-one, um, and twenty. Um, and this week, on Wednesday, we're all attending that regional meeting to hear about the audit and ask questions and go from there. Um, I do know that the audit report was referred to the Attorney General's Office and Ethics Commission. So I'm sure that they'll be reviewing it as well.
All right, good. Any other questions or comments on that? All right, um, so I'm glad that's brought to our attention. Now, the last thing on the agenda is town manage, managers evaluation. Uh, just a be- beginning discussion, um, one of the things that, you know, we didn't get last year that I feel is very important. I, I hope other people kind of feel the same way, is that um, generally, it's nice to get um, evaluations of the town manager. And the heads of departments usually submit those and then we get to see them. And with the, when, when you look at, you know, we're gonna have a number of department heads leaving. Um, not having anything to do with the town manager. But it would be nice for the select board to get assessments or do the evaluation of the, of the town manager. Um, by those department heads. Um, I don't know, do other people, does that make sense to you guys to, perhaps we should get moving on having the department heads do this assessment?
In my personal opinion, is department heads' evaluations don't mean a whole lot. I think some of them are, are, you know, not, not really effective for us. I think what we ought to need to do is write a form that we do. I'd like to see Lynn fill it, fill her own out and get it to us. We've asked for that in the past. And let, you know, we've got a couple of new members of the board here, take a look at, at what that form looks like. So they can kind of start getting a sense of what to put together. I think we, you know, we, you know, we've had people in the past that just check boxes and other people who write. You know, write a, a sentence or two about the issues. And, and clearly, it's more helpful for Lynn in feedback, she gets a sentence or two than if she gets just checked boxes. But I think it'll also help her understand what, what we see as the important issue. So I, you know, whether we get feedback from other department heads, the issue is always how it comes back to us. It needs to be done, you know, anonymously through a third party. I don't know if we have them sent to you, Tom, or whatever it is, but you don't have to not have an identification of the, of the department head who submits them.
I, I agree. I, I mean, I, I don't know what other people feel about depart- departmental evaluations of town manager. Does anyone else feel that those are something they want to see? Mark Strange?
Well, speaking as a department head myself and agamom, um, it makes me a little nervous to, to have to review my boss. I mean, you know, my, my boss is a, a good boss, I would likely say good things about, about, about him. Um, but it's, I don't know, I. I, a- as a department head, I would, I, I, I don't know, I, I don't love that idea. You can, conceptually, it makes sense, um, but um, not sure, not sure that's, that's where we want to go.
Any other comments on that?
Yeah, Tom, I, I don't need the reviews. I, I, I never have had reviews come up like that. I think those type of reviews are best handled if they go right straight back to Lynn and she wants to go out with a, an informal survey. To her people for a three sixty. A lot of times, the comments that are made as long as manager themselves in, in developing. But our relationship with Lynn, uh, and any town manager is on a total different uh, plateau than it is with the division chiefs. Our interaction is of a total different uh, 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 need and, and social environment. So I've never had any value in having division chiefs' evaluations of a person that I'm gonna write an evaluation of.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other?
Yeah, my, my comment would be, um, I agree, as has been said, except uh, the people who are, who are working for Lynn. And basically Lynn is, you know, they all, everyone in town works for Lynn. And um. In terms of our relationship, the select board's relationship with those people, um. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. We're gonna know exactly how they feel and I'm not, and I, I hear what Mark Strange said and I, you know. It's a very, it's, it's, it's tricky, but I, I think that the people working for somebody have, their opinion cannot be ignored. Um, it, it may not be taken, but the fact that these folks work for somebody hasn't, you know, and, and. In terms of the effectiveness of the job they do, is obviously gonna be affected by how they feel about the person they're working for. Um, whether we see that as a board and when we see that's another question. So I, 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 I think it's, it's a toughie and it's, it's a tough issue, but I don't think that. Uh, and I think, you know, being anonymous, I, you know, and there, there, there's a lot of pitfalls to it. But I just, I'm not sure we can just ignore employees of the town who basically work for Lynn. Their opinions completely, completely not taken into account at all. There, there ought to be some methodology where um, voice heard, whether or accept it or not is a whole other question. But not, not to hear those voices, I, I'm not sure that's the correct way to go.
Okay, I'd just like to follow that up, because again, these are, these assessments are not all bad news. You know, there's, there's a lot of things department heads can inform the select board of, that we wouldn't have any access to. Because there's a lot of meetings that we don't attend, uh, there's a lot of decisions that are made that we are, you know, we'd never hear about. And, and uh, it, and so she's doing a, a better job than we think, you know, it'd be nice to hear that. And if she's not doing a good job, you know, you know, if there's no way for them to communicate that to us. You know, it's, it, it, it puts us, it limits our capacity to give her an assessment or evaluation. It's gonna help her move forward. I know we have our own view, but um, you know, I think that all the people who work for the town. Also, you know, I think we owe, we owe them something and, and we should, and again, maybe it would best be done anonymously. Um, and I know in the past, we haven't gotten them from every department head. But um, you know, I, I just think it would be helpful to get some information other than my own observations. That's what I'm thinking.
Steve, maybe we should show you the ones we've gotten in the past and might, might influence, you think of the value of them.
That's possible. That, that is entirely possible. Since I haven't seen them, I have not done an evaluation. This is your number one, but you know. Uh, maybe we should ask Lynn about what she thinks about that kind of feedback.
Uh, um, I'm kind of fifty-fifty on it. I think I'm curious, certainly, to see what some of the feedback would be. Um, but, and I'm not speaking, um, you know, about a specific situation here, certainly. But I do find it a little odd that um, a subordinate would um, review. Um, especially if it's been a situation where you maybe, as the manager, had to do some progressive discipline. Um, again, that's not about an issue here at all, uh, but just, that just did come to mind. Though it could certainly be in the future at some scenario. Um, I don't know. I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other.
Okay. And again, hopefully all the people on this board would, would understand that there are situations where there's progressive discipline. And, you know, and would say, yes, you know, you're.
We don't know that, Tom. We're not supposed, we're not allowed to know that. We don't know who's got a bone to pick and who's trying to get a, who's trying to get a promotion with Lynn. And, and, you know, I don't care who it is. I've read them in the past. You can always tell who's who. Just by some of the things they include. It's not how they write, it's what they write. You know, not to pick on anybody, but you know, if they're writing about Wolf Swamp Fields, it's probably the Parks and Rec Department. They're writing about the sewers, something with the sewers, it's probably the BP. So it's very, very difficult to be anonymous. I found those to be, you know, ex- skewed so much that to be of no value. But, you know, and, and I think to put people, have people do it. Like you said, we didn't get them from everybody, so we got them from people who had a particular comment they wanted to make, which is worse. You know, I, I, I just don't, I, you know, you know, I think if you're more interested in that, pick up the phone, call Paul Pesterzak and ask him.
Well, I think there's more room for uh, to get, you know, in, in doing that kind of a thing that you. Uh, it depends on the day you call somebody, how they're gonna react. I think there's something about giving a person a, a, a standard format for feedback and put it down. And um, you know, I know that in the past, when I've had evaluations. That um, really gave me feedback on my performance, it was very valuable to me. And so, you know, I'm, I'm.
For three of the five people on the board say they don't need them or don't want them.
Yeah.
So now, it's, you know, and Steve's not quite sure if you want them, but. I, I, either, either way, Tom, one way or the other, we ought to get the thumbs out to our, our board. And, and we've always asked the town manager to write something up so that we know, you know, some of the things that we don't know that she's worked on. But you, you can only use COVID nineteen five times, more than five times, it doesn't count.
Okay, and then the other thing would be, does it make a difference to the board doing this evaluation before the town meeting in May? Or um, or after? the town meeting in May, or, um, or after?
We got other things to do. I, I think we've always said we target for the, to, to complete it the second week in May and talk about it the first week in June. We still have a, you know, like, you know, the old select board members in June, the first meeting, and that's when we finalize.
Okay, so that's, um, all right, so let's look at that. So we can, so select board members, I mean, we probably don't need to get it quite this early, but if we looked at mid-April, getting our, uh, maybe even later now. Yeah, I guess mid-April, we would get, you know, we make sure that everyone gets their forms, and they can begin to work on the evaluation. And then Lynn, so if Lynn could do a self-evaluation and give it to us, now with mid-April, now, so when do you think, Lynn, when do you think you would have time to do an evaluation? Think mid-April would be okay, or would you wanna do later now?
No, I can make that, I can meet that timeline.
Okay, so let's look at that, um, you know, so, you know, the week of the nineteenth, twentieth, something like that, um, if you can get that to us, and then we'll, you know, uh.
Is there like a form that you're having me fill out, or criteria?
Yeah, Debbie, Debbie has it, Lynn.
Okay.
And I can send, you know, a bunch of us have it, but Debbie has it, I know.
Yeah, Debbie, Debbie has it. And then perhaps Deb, you could send out the form that the s- select board numbers use. Also, uh, we can just have it on file, so we, we don't have to start it until after, uh, or you can start doing parts of it now, and then be ready in time for, for, um.
And Debbie, do it before you leave.
Yeah, send it out.
And that would be good. And, uh, all right, good. I just wanna bring that up so we're all on the same page. And I appreciate your, um, your comments, and that sounds like a plan. Anyone else, else have anything else to say about this process, this point? Okay, great. Look forward to a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Okay, one second.
I, I think they're stupid.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote, Deb?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
And Richard?
Double yes.
Okay, our next meeting will be, uh, a special meeting on Tuesday, March ninth, followed by one on Wednesday, the tenth, and then the next regular select board meeting will be, uh, Monday, March fifteenth. Uh, good evening. Thank you for joining us.